Alright, everybody. Good evening. I'd like now to now welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for Galt for April 6, 2021. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to now ask our city manager to give a brief explanation to the public, Mr. Heinz.
Good evening, Lorenzo Heinz, City Manager. The meeting, this meeting of the City of Galt, my apologies, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or by video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute time limit unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take live comments first and then the written comments will be read out loud. We're also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand feature in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we do typically in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called upon to speak and their line is unmuted. But doing so is not required. Attendees should also see the lower-hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Would like to now call the meeting to order, Ms. Hubert, if you could please take a roll call.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Tina, can, can you speak?
Can you hear me?
Okay, I don't think we can hear you.
We can hear.
We can?
Yes.
Okay, great, great, great. Sorry about that.
No problem. All right, if you would all like to join us in a silent prayer followed by a flag salute. All right, if you'd like to know, all join me in a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Ms. Hubert, if you could please do our replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, April 9 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 10 at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel.
Thank you. We'll move on to our first item, B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Does any of the council have anything they wish to pull? Nothing? Okay. We'll move on to item C, Presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
Not this evening.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to item D, Public Comment.
Under Government, oh, sorry.
That's right.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash
All right, thank you. Do we have any written public comments tonight?
Not, not on non-agenda items.
Okay. Rose, do we have any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, then we'll move on to our next item, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. We'll start with Mr., I apologize, Vice Mayor Sandu.
It's nothing to report tonight, but the Transportation Authority meeting on April 8, I certainly will report the next council meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Papino.
Yes, I attended the Metro Air Quality District Board. And one thing that was potentially of note locally is that grant opportunities called Cash for Cleaner 2021 Community Air Quality Grant Program. Among the projects that they have $18 million in grant money to fund included zero emission trucks and buses, installation of EV charging stations, and clean farm and construction equipment. So they asked that we do our best to publicize that as the applications are now open. I forwarded that on to the city manager as well as Ms. Mendez to distribute it to department heads in the community as they saw appropriate. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano.
I do have a brief report in regards to the Secog Board Meeting and Policy and Innovation Committee Meeting I attended yesterday. It looks like that in terms of legislation related to transportation and housing, Secog is moving forward on some items and through the contracted advocates through Secog. And that is going to start wrapping up here pretty quick, only because the legislative session is, in terms of hearings, is it will be winding down in the next few months. So the Green Means Go program that I've mentioned before, which is a program to assist in reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 19%. And I just want to point out again that that's not something that we came up with locally here. The city didn't come up with that, that number or the fact that we had to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It did come from the state as a mandate. And so we're doing whatever we can in terms of advocacy at the Capitol to try to get capital, if you will, no pun intended, to help with that. And so it's, it's still ongoing. And Christina Lockey, who is our legislative advocate, is continuing to work on that. And then lastly, as many of you may have seen, the city managers update to us that we have a couple of projects that look like they're going to be, well, they are, they're going to be recommended to the full Secog Board for approval here in our city. And I want to thank Mike Selling and, and staff for putting those applications together and really working hard behind the scenes to make it possible so that we can, in the future, grab on to some money that will really help our community. And, and the strings attached to it are self-induced. So it's not like it's, it's a grant that we have to do all these other things. But there are some things that we do, but, but through Mike's advocacy with Secog staff and board members and the like, I think what, what we're doing in terms of project applications are, it's a lot more streamlined and a lot more targeted. And I say, I say that because Secog staff was said hands down that our applications were very well done, very well communicated. And so, Mike, do you have anything to mention about those? I just want to say, though, we do have a Secog Board Meeting where these projects are coming forward. They're only recommendations at this time until Thursday when we meet. And then the, the full Secog Board will vote on them, so they're not necessarily a formalized done deal, but it looks like that's staff recommendation. And then after Mike has his explanation, I think that's all I have to report.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the acknowledgement, Councilwoman Lozano. And no, I give full credit to, to our staff and, and we had a consultant that the city has apparently used for the last several years. And I think the team effort there was really kind of what led to the quality of the application. So no, I think we were, did a good job, obviously. And I think we got some good competitive projects and consequently, you know, they recognize that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to your staff. For myself, I attended a Sacramento Public Library Authority Meeting three weeks ago, actually two weeks ago. And we discussed typical stuff, reopening of some of the branches or continued reopening, slow transition of that. We talked about, we actually unanimously approved the reopening of a new library branch in North Sacramento, which has been absent of a library for a very long time. Some of the, these are some of the areas which we feel are in most need. There was a pretty robust discussion about that, and it was a full vote of the board to do that. We had a lot of public comment, and so it was very happy. We also discussed some, some new ideas with some new concepts of libraries where it's not feasible, such as using containers, like two containers put together and turning them into almost like a a small, like we can put those in like public parks where we don't need to purchase land. It's already owned by the city and they could put these and, and you put windows in them and, and they have a limited supply of things in there where people can check out books from these. And it's kind of an interesting concept, but it's something that's kind of been thrown out there as, as being more cost-effective than having to, you know, build a full branch or retrofit an existing building or purchase something. So it was a good meeting. Other than that, that was pretty much it. And I don't believe I have attended anything else of note that I can recall. So that would be it for me. So we will move on to our next item, which is item F, our Consent Calendar. It is recommended that items one through five be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. And these items are: Item one, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of March 16, 2021. Item two is to receive and file warrants for a period ending March 23, 2021. Item three, Treasurer's Report for a period ending January 2021. Item four, Approving Joint Community Facilities Agreement with Consumers Community Service District for Community Facilities District numbers 2021-1 Public Services and 2020-2 Liberty Ranch. And item five, which is the Contract Amendment with NSF Polydine Incorporated and approving appropriation of $14,350. I will entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar.
So moved.
Consent Calendar.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
All right. Motion passes 5-0. All right, now moving on to item G, Schedule Matters, Notice of Public Hearing. We're going to start with number one, which is our Galt Market Community Plan Visioning Session and Discussion, which will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Heinz. Mr. Heinz?
Yes, good evening. Can you all see that PowerPoint slide that's up now? Very good, very good. So to the Galt City Council and to the citizens of Galt, this is our Galt Market Community Master Plan. And what this represents is a, a plan that the staff and I, the executive team and I, put together based on our knowledge of community needs and conversations that we've had with members of the community. We're going to talk about Galt's past, want to talk about Galt's present, then we're going to talk about the future. And then we're going to talk about the next steps that we'll take after we present this plan. The one thing that I'd like to specifically call out is that this master plan is a visioning exercise, and it's an opportunity to generate community discussion and feedback. If the council directs staff to proceed with this project, then we have a number of items that we have to accomplish. And that includes a detailed financial analysis, environmental studies, additional outreach, market research, modifying any legislation, changing in the general plan or rezoning of properties, and also exploring a long-term land lease for the properties. So we start off with a little bit of the history of Galt. And some of our longtime residents may already know this, but there may be folks out there who are newer to our area. And so the city of Galt was planned by the Central Pacific Railroad back in 1869. It was home to the Sacramento County Fair from 1937 to 1954. And in 1955, the county fair relocated to Sacramento. The former grounds were deeded to the city with certain restrictions in 1969. In 1982, the council at that time made the decision to operate municipal buildings and the Galt Market on the property with the stipulation that the rents are to be utilized for the funding of parks and recreation. And historically, the market has served as the largest funding source for parks and recreation. In recent times, however, we've, we've been subjected to declining revenues for the market, and we'll talk a little bit about why here in a second. But this graph represents the revenues which are on top and in green and the expenditures which are on the bottom and in red. And as you can see, these two lines are drawing closer and closer to each other and to the point where we actually expect these lines to cross sometime in 2021 or 2022. Now, what this means is that as the, as the revenues decline for the market, so goes sort of the opposite effect for the general fund support of the market. Now, there's always a philosophical position that the general fund should always be there to support the Parks and Recreation Department, and that's not, and that's not in dispute here. What we're trying to convey, and you'll also see it in the Long-Term Financial Plan later in this meeting, is that as these revenues decline, the general fund contribution for parks and recreation increases. But this is one of the issues that we have to solve. So the reason, one of the reasons we see the Galt Market having a decline in revenues is the rise of e-commerce. And so folks are finding more convenient ways to get their goods. And e-commerce is, is one of those vehicles. Now, the whole COVID year that we just experienced just exacerbated e-commerce and just made it even more popular. And I'm talking about Amazon and Wayfair. As a result of e-commerce growing, some of the brick and mortar stores are starting to close. And so we're starting to see store closures beyond the Great Recession. The increase in e-commerce does not mean the end of physical retail locations, because most goods and services are still purchased in person. The millennials are the largest group in the workforce, and over 70% prefer to spend their money on an experience over material items. And so that's one of the things that we're, that's going to become a central theme in this visioning exercise, is how do we convert the Galt Market into an entity that can reverse its financial fortunes in addition to becoming an experience for the visitors? Third bullet, there are only three reasons why consumers visit a store or a shopping center, and that's convenience, value, and there's that word experience again. So a little bit about our past efforts with the Galt Market Master Plan. Back in 19, 2019 and 2020, staff engaged in a number of public outreach efforts. For a meeting that was conducted on March 9, 2020, postcards were sent to all residents of the city, that's all 26,000 folks announcing this meeting. We've had several public presentations and listening sessions. And as you see, they're listed here and they occurred again during 2019 and 2020. The COVID pandemic put a damper on our outreach efforts, and so we've had to find other ways to reach out to the public. One of those other ways was to conduct a online survey. And this survey reached a little over 600 people, and I'm going to show you some of the results of the survey now. So the first question that we'll present to you is what's missing from Galt? And so the survey indicated that 45% of those folks responded that entertainment options were an issue here in Galt and that there was a desire for more entertainment options. The second question is, how often do you visit the Galt Market? And 45% of those 600 folks said rarely. The next questions were, how would you describe the market in a single word? And so these word diagrams reflect the, the responses of the survey folks. And the bigger the font, the more, the more that response came up. And so we've got a mixed bag of opinions over here on the left regarding how the market currently stands. The next question, however, is telling in that we ask them to describe what you want the market of the future to be in a single word. And so they are looking for the market to be more exciting, more convenient, great, clean, fun, amazing. So there's that word experience again. It's not in the word diagram, but it, but all of that speaks to me as we, we need to increase the experience or make the experience more enjoyable. What brings you to the market? And so the big, big draw, as we all know, is produce. And 34% of the respondents said that produce was the big, the big draw. But we find out that 23% of the respondents also said the experience. So the experience is, is definitely key to some folks. So over here on the right, some of the key points identified from the Galt Market Area Community Survey was the sense of community is very important to the residents of Galt. And that kind of goes without saying. I can tell you as a city manager landing here on August 31, 2020, that was the first lesson I learned about the city of Galt. The system, sense of community is strong here. There is also a strong desire for more entertainment options. And I've heard that quite consistently, and the staff has heard it quite consistently as well. And as you saw earlier, there's mixed opinions on how the market currently stands. And, and we also saw that fresh produce was the big draw. So based on the survey, the fact that we need to figure out a way to reverse our, our financial fortunes for the market, the staff put together, the staff and I put together some goals for the master plan. So the first thing we want to do is enhance the experience of the Galt Market. And the next thing was, we want to create a gateway for the Galt Market as the focal point of the community. At the same time, we want to ensure viable, sustainable source of income for parks and recreation. And we want to determine the highest and best use for the entire property. Now, the other thing that's not listed here is we want to figure out a way to connect the Galt Market to Old Town Galt down on Fourth Street. And you will see as we go through these diagrams that we've started that process. What you'll see is a series of phases, and there'll be five phases. And each phase represents five to 10 years of work. And these phases are based on our understanding of the greater community need. And the build-out horizon is somewhere between 20 and 30 years. If done correctly and efficiently, we can probably get it done in 20. And I also wanted to remind everyone that this is a visioning concept. And so this is, there is no commitment here. We're not changing the zoning, we're not making any changes. This is just a visionary concept that we are presenting to council tonight for their review and discussion. We will then be going out and speaking with the community, and we will be bringing this item back to council in June for acceptance. So here's the market as it currently stands. And I wanted to, first of all, let everybody know who owns what property, because we're talking 10 acres here. And so the property in blue and the property in yellow are owned or controlled by the city. And the properties that are in red are controlled by the school district. And the properties that are in forest green are privately owned. For this particular presentation, the privately owned properties are not affected or are not part of this particular visioning plan. We would not want to make the presumption to those property owners that the city has plans for their properties without consulting them. So therefore, we want to make sure that everyone who owns those private properties around the Galt Market understand that they are not part of this visioning exercise. However, if they see this exercise and want to participate in this exercise in some way or want to participate in the revamping of the Galt Market, we welcome them with open arms. And so we want everybody to make sure, make sure we understood that they're not part of the original plan. But if they want to participate, we're more than happy to chat with them about that. And so here is sort of the 20-year vision of the Galt Market Master Plan. As you can see, it's a lot different than it is right now. And I'm going to take you from where we are to this final plan. So currently, the Galt Market is about 10 acres and a little under 1,100 parking stalls. We have the Galt Sports Complex, three softball diamonds, and then we have city and county buildings. And so Phase One of the plan would essentially shave the market down to 8.3 acres for vendors. And by the way, in case it's not clear, the Galt Market itself, that entity, still will be operating in this, this plan. It's just that, you know, the, the, the footprint of the market will change just a little bit. So we've shaved the market from 10 acres down to 8.3 acres. Within that 8.3 acres, we are now placing, if you can all see my cursor, we're now placing 90 small lot, single-family homes. And so we, we thought that these homes would address the needs of seniors and some of the youth that we have spoken with regarding the shortage of housing here in the city of Galt. And so with the funds that we were able to raise from doing this housing project, we will be able to pour those dollars into the Galt Market. By the way, let me make one, another thing clear. Our intention with this entire plan is not to sell any of these land parcels to any entity. Our, our our, our drive, so to speak, is to maintain, is to maintain, ensure that the city maintains control and ownership of all of these underlying properties. We will work with developers in sort of a long-term land lease fashion, but the city will always retain ownership of these lands. So in addition to these houses, we're also projecting a 110 Key Limited Service Hotel, which is right up here, if I can get my cursor to cooperate right up here. And we're also looking at for this phase, adding a casual dining restaurant. And it could be a Sherry's or a Black Bear or just, just a casual dining restaurant. Phase two, now we start, things start to take shape. We have the housing here, we have the hotel, we have the casual dining restaurant, but But now we also add another um area of medium density, single family homes. And so we will be talking, you could be talking apartments, townhouses, but there will be a medium density, single family homes. And again, offering more relief to those folks um who are looking for housing uh that's um that is suitable for starters or seniors. Now you also notice that the market property itself, this rectangle here is starting to change. You will notice that we're starting to make it more of a park. And you will see that that is that it has semicircular walkways built into it. And we also have some other amenities that we intend to uh build into it. And again, this is a visioning exercise. But some of the things that we're looking at is perhaps a splash fountain right here in the middle of the park. Uh we thought that that would be a good amenity, especially on those hundred and five degree days here in Galt. Uh we're also looking at providing a covered pavilion. And so this will provide relief in the in the in the shape of water. Um and it also would provide relief with shade um uh from the summer sun and allow us to schedule events out there. In addition to those items, we're also looking at an amphitheater. And so putting an amphitheater on this property uh would allow the Parks Department to schedule entertainment, to entertain the folks as they visit the Galt Market. Again, the underlying drive here is to enhance the experience. The other thing that we're looking at here is a bicycle or pedestrian slash bi- bicycle greenway. And that's this this um walkway here. And as you can see, this walkway lets off onto F Street. And it's our it's our sort of long term vision that this walkway leads to F Street. We will somehow make F Street more pedestrian fin friendly. And that will lead folks from F Street on to Fourth Street into Old Town Galt. And so here are some larger pictures of the splash fountain, the amphitheater and both here and here. Um the green walkway and the covered pavilion. Phase three. Now we transitioned the entire park from a paved market to a central park. And so we start out with a central, we started out with a park like area here, but this area was still paved over. So now we're basically removing all the blacktop. We've got grass in the whole area, the semicircular walkways are extended. And the farmer's market, by the way, still continues. Now, the question, the question we get sometimes is, wait a minute, where are the vendors? Well, the vendors, instead of being in the center of the market, um as they are now, they'll be lined up along the perimeter. You can see these little spikes here. They'll be lined up along the perimeter and around the perimeter. There's also space along these semicircular walkways to also um house vendors. So we could actually have vendors on the outside and vendors along these walkways. So there'll be plenty of spaces for vendors. In addition to the amenities and and now expanding the park out or the area out to a central park concept, we're now looking at um adding experiential commercial to this area. And again, experience, that's what we're trying to enhance here. And so what we're looking to do is in is increase uh you sort of pedestrian oriented entertainment. Um and we can also have room for services here. But businesses that encourage, we're talking laser tag, we're talking axe throwing, just things that are fun for folks to do um on a on a night out. Some of the amenities that we plan to uh build into this area, and I and I use the term we plan to only because, you know, we've been living with this plan forever. Uh not forever, but we've been living with it for a while and it uh it it sort of becomes ingrained um in us. But again, this is a visioning exercise. And so we've got a public fountain, um similar to what you see in Roseville, uh but not as grandiose, but uh but the public fountain would be nice. We're just trying to make the area nice. We're looking at a food hall, sort of a farm to fork feature, and um we thought that that would be a nice uh amenity. In addition, as she, we've added a playground to the Galt Market Central Park. And so this playground might be an opportunity to engage Union Pacific um to see if we can find some things or put some things in this park that hearkens back to Galt's railroad origins. And it would be a nice theme for a park, but it was, but again, the ultimate is to again, encourage the experience. And we want the kids to have fun here. The other uh thing that we see, uh as I mentioned earlier, the vendors along the outside. And um and here are some larger pictures of those uh this particular setting. You can see the vendors along the outsides of the of the market, along the perimeter. Uh you can see the uh the vendors along the sort of the uh semicircular walkways. You can see an aerial view here of what the vendors look like along the perimeters and here um would be a a good shot or a proposed shot of what uh that area around the amphitheater would look like. Because the because essentially folks would be able to go to the vendors, get what they need to get. And if we've got entertainment programmed out there, we would encourage them to stay and enjoy the entertainment. And street musicians, here's the axe throwing that I mentioned earlier. The other thing is we were looking to, in the area where we had the commercial, is to make the grade of the street at the same level as the sidewalk. Because that will allow us to essentially block off this entire area here and make it one big street fair. And so we'd be able to string lights across it and again, make it a a nice place to go. And here's a sort of an example of it here, uh but it would be a nice um uh place for folks to congregate. Phase four. So we've got the housing in, we've got the experiential commercial in, we've got the hotel and we've got casual dining. Um we've got some more housing over here. And now for phase four, what we propose is is to put an independent and assisted care living facility right here at the south side of the market. And so that would you know, again, address another need that we have heard from or heard about um as far as the housing here in Galt. Phase five, which is the final phase, is that we were looking to um chat with the elementary school district about perhaps consolidating um city school, city and school district buildings. Um we're also looking at a commercial mixed use here in this area. Um we will always maintain um of the operations of the Littleton and the Tribola Center. And there may be an opportunity to sort of reuse those, but we will always have access to those large halls. In addition, we have, as I noted before, that the uh the assisted care living facility. And so in the end, in twenty forty, this is what we expect the Galt Market area to look like based on this visioning exercise. So the benefits of this exercise is that we provide housing options for young families and seniors. It creates the experience that will draw families and individuals uh to the market area and keep them there. Provides a direct connection to Old Town Galt. This will definitely solve the declining revenue issue and allow the market to become viable. The big key here is the city retains ownership of the market property. We will need the cooperation of partners for funding and partners to develop the land. And it will also increase the variety of commercial opportunities and uh including dining and various other services. So next steps, um we're going to meet with focus community groups um during April and May. And this includes all the commissions and committees that report up to the Galt City Council. We'll also be meeting with other organizations such as the the Historical Society, the Rotary and the Lions. Uh we'll also be meeting with the Chamber. I've already met with a number of members of the community as well and given them a preview of this plan. And so far, the feedback has been positive. Um we will also, if the opportunity presents itself, meet with members of the California Legislature, uh both on the assembly side and senate side um that represent Galt. And we'll also be sitting down with some state departments as well. Um again, we'll be looking for funding and partners. So we've got to um, you know, continue the effort and then we will come back to council in June. And we will ask the council to accept the plan with the public input um at that point in time. Now, this plan is funded by the California Energy Commission. Uh back in twenty seventeen, we uh received a grant from the California Energy Commission to do three things. That's the city's climate action plan, um a plan for a Coralian Boulevard and also a plan for the Galt Market Plan. And so this is the plan that we've developed for the Galt Market Plan. And this is the plan that we propose that we give to the California Energy Commission as proof that we've we've accomplished uh what the grant requires. If council desires at some point in the future, perhaps next fiscal year, hey, we like that plan. Uh Lorenzo, we'd like you and the staff to bring us back some feasibility studies. Um then we would uh we myself and the staff would be ready to do that. The list of those items are over here on the left. And those are the those are the first things that we'll have to do to bring council back a feasibility study. Um but again, like I said, this is a visioning exercise. And there is no commitment, there will be no zoning changes or any changes whatsoever other than having uh this plan in place. And I thank you all for the opportunity to to present this plan to you. And I'm and the staff and I are available for any questions, any discussions. This is not a um decision item for council. This is just merely a presentation. But you if you if you have comments, we'd love to hear them.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Do we have public comment on this? Any written public comment? Does either does it either council want to have any initial comments before we go to public comment? Do we want to give input first? Wha- what's the feeling here?
I'd love to hear from the public.
Okay.
I'd I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and let's go ahead and start with public comment then, Ms. Hubert, if you would.
Okay, our our first comment is from Daniel Dunier. Uh I am writing, sorry, I am writing you this email to express my concerns regarding the Galt Market Plan. I do not support this plan. Over the last couple of years, I have attended the city forums and have heard the presentation while part of the high school board. During those events, I expressed my current concerns as well as heard other citizens express their concerns. Even now, as I am seeing what is being proposed, I have more questions and concerns than I do answers. In my opinion, this is nothing more than an infill project that is being disguised as something meant to renew the Galt Market. Do not allow yourselves to be fooled. One of the proposals to this plan includes re- relocating the softball fields from their current location to a city park that is located on the far outskirts of the city limits. How does this move benefit local businesses? How many restaurants, coffee shops, convenience stores, et cetera, are within walking distance of Walker Park? How many of these businesses does the city ever plan to be built in around the area of Walker Park? The main route routes to Walker Park for those attending tournaments will be a long route such as Orr Road, Elm Avenue and Christiansen Road, none of which have business businesses that will benefit from relocation of the softball field. But in this plan, the softball fields need to be relocated in order to build more housing. Does anyone remember the traffic that used to cripple downtown Galt during flea market days? How do you think the traffic will be by adding a ton of high density housing to this area? Or do we expect all these new residents to just walk? If the market is continued, along with all the new housing crammed into the space, we will once again have horrible downtown traffic. This plan will create more problems than it will solve. Don't be fooled, this proposed project will have a major and forever impact on our city, on our downtown and our quality of life. It is crucial that it has to be one hundred percent correct for our city and for our needs. The current proposal is not correct for our city. A couple of years ago, when I first began hearing of the project, I heard on several occasions from city officials that the school districts were on board with building a shared facility to house both Galt School Districts and the city offices. The fact is, the high school district never had discussion regarding our interest in sharing a facility with the city or the elementary district district. This was a false statement that was being used to try and make the project sound more appealing to the public side. I strongly encourage our city council to squash this land grab once and for all. Put it to rest where it belongs. This plan has too many questions and not enough concrete answers. There are plenty of other options that can be done to increase revenue and renew the Galt Market. Unfortunately, those options would take time and energy, and it seems to me that is something the city isn't willing to invest. Next is from Sam Mitchell. In a recent article named fifteen best flea markets in California, several flea markets are featured. Interest, interestingly enough, only two are open on a weekday and all of them are open on the weekends. Alternatively, the nearest recurring flea markets to Galt all only operate on the weekend. If you extrapolate that across California, you will see a trend. All flea markets are open on the weekends, very few only weekdays. Another trend is that most of these markets are not on meticulously maintained grounds or were purposely developed for a flea market. They are organic and have a sense of tradition. With that background, it is completely mind boggling to me as a citizen and a business owner as to why we are talking about anything except for the operating hours. Until we address that, then why would we develop the land to support a failing business model? Why isn't the city addressing declining revenues by adjusting our business model to mirror the su- the success of other markets? Why are we trying to invent something new when there are hundreds of highly successful markets we could emulate? Why haven't we provided our citizens with a place where we can get fresh produce, upcycled goods, art- artisan made goods, garage sale items and antiques like so many other cities? Until we can correct the revenue curve, our efforts should be one hundred percent operational and not visionary. Um the other one I have is from Joe Batondo. As many of you know, I am a former Parks and Rec Commission member and advocate for better parks here in Galt. While I was a commissioner, the mark market plan update was first brought to the Parks Commission. The general idea of the project was to find a way for the property to generate more money. Several ideas were presented. One included solar panels over half the flea market. The creation of additional buildings to generate rental income just south of Veterans. Also, the idea of a few RV hookups that could be rented by people staying for a softball tournament. All those ideas I supported. At no time was the idea of selling the property and relocating those amenities elsewhere ever presented. The city is growing, the parks are becoming more impacted. The idea that we would sell a prime piece of property that we got for free in order to purchase a property from the school district at an exorbitant price makes zero business sense. When you adopted the updated Walker Master Plan, it was made clear that three baseball fields were too small. You only slightly expanded the parking for the facility. The only way to relocate the softball pu- complex is to buy the school property, which, like I said earlier, is stupid. Even if you bought this property, you still would not have enough parking for these facilities. The city has a funding problem. As much as it pains me as a conservative to advocate for a new founding source sales tax increase, it is the only way I see the city being able to give its citizens the parks program it deserves. The parks in the city are already pathetic and rundown. Please do not sell the market grounds. The city would be losing one of the biggest amenities we have. It would be years before it could ever be replaced. And it looks like we just had another one come in from Francis Brosman. You do a survey and yet you do not ask if citizens are interested in selling leasing off the fairgrounds. This is one of the largest decisions that will change the dynamic of Galt's future. And I believe any decisions that are to be made are postponed till once in person meetings are allowed once again. Personally, personally have issues with Zoom not loading. And I am certain that many others are less computer literate than I, thus cannot speak. Hearing a lot of nice to have and experiences and yet do not hear how this is going to be financed. Axe throwing sponsored by city liability, low cost housing, are we not building twenty eight hundred high density houses currently? Will this not result in about 25% growth? In my opinion, no decision should be made till the council has a chance to meet in person with open meetings. Thank you for the chance to express some of my concerns. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to respond?
I would, I have one public comment on the attendee side.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, you're muted, by the way.
Yeah, let's let the, let's let the verbal speaker go and then we'll allow you to.
Sure.
I have Mr. Jerry Sauter. If you unmute your mic, thank you. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, council members and city staff. Appreciate the work that has gone into this. I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts with regards to the plan. And I know that I think many of us in the public believe that something needs to be done regarding the curve with the revenue. But I would like to see our vision kind of stick to some areas where Galt has strong roots. And I think Galt has very strong agricultural and community roots. And, you know, I was reading, and I can't remember if it was the local paper, about the possibility that Galt was being considered for the fair to come back to Galt because the Sac County Fair was going to leave Cal Expo. You know, this, that kind of seems something more like we should explore, especially since we have a community that is so tied to that, going to that fair. My only other input, while I love the idea of the facilities, you know, I have to be frank that I think we have some delusions of grandeur that in a town of our size, some of these amenities are A, going to be drawn to Galt, and two, are going to be to the scale as we see in these visionary pictures and layouts. So I would just like the council to consider, as we look at the market plan, to really have it be more on the pulse of the, as much on the pulse of the community as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sauter.
Thank you. We have no other hands, we have no other hands raised online.
Mr. Hines, if you would like to.
Yes. First of all, I'll be meeting with Mr. Denier shortly. So him and I connected today, and I look forward to chatting with him and giving him, you know, understanding his concerns about the market plan and also giving him some more context around the plan. Now, as far as the softball fields, yes, the plan is to relocate those fields out to Walker Park or to the Heschel property. We will be working with the developers to develop a softball complex out there that will rival what we have. And while there is concern that there are no businesses or amenities out there, there will, there is no businesses or amenities out there now. But once you make those upgrades to Walker Park that staff brought before council about a month and a half ago, and you add this softball facility, businesses will find a way to establish themselves near a customer base. The other comment about the housing being high-density, that's not our intention. Our intention is to work with some of our partners who have access to housing consultants and who will be able to give us sort of the best picture of what, what level of housing works there, but still meets the desire of Galt's community. As far as the participation with the school districts, this plan has been presented to both superintendents of the school district and a member of the board for the high school district. I have also asked for an opportunity to present this plan before both schools, school district boards, and to get their feedback and to get their comments. Regarding the, the next person regarding the hours, and Director Solis may be able to, will definitely need to assist me here. But we, you know, he mentioned, why don't we emulate the other markets? Well, one of the issues we have is we have to have demand from our vendors who will want to come here on the weekends. If they're already committed to these other markets on the other, on the, on the weekends, we have to give them an experience and a place that surpasses what they currently have in order to draw them back to Galt on the weekends. Director Solis, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you speak a little bit to those comments.
Yeah, it, it's not as simple as, you know, let's open and they'll come. We would be competing with Denau's Farmer's Market, Barry Assa down in San Jose, and the, and a couple of flea markets in Stockton. It would be, you know, they're established there. They have their spots there. And it's not like they have tons of employees they could send in there to our market. So it's not as simple as, let's just open and they'll come. And then, you know, about the hours, we've, we've come to council before. It's been several, several years asking to open on the weekends, and we were denied. We were met with several residents from the area around the market that asked that we not open. One comment continues to stick in my mind that we put up with that place two days a week. We don't want to have to put up with it on the weekends. Now, if that's changed, then, you know, those are conversations we can have. But, you know, those are things that have, have been told to us in the past. And it's, it's just not as simple as open and they'll come. So.
Understood.
I hope I answered some of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Solis. The next speaker indicated that we were selling the property. We're not selling the property. We're leasing the property. So let me make that clear to everyone listening and that we're not looking to sell any of this property. We're going to do this with long-term land leases. The city will maintain ownership of these lands for as long as the city exists. I understand that there was a fair amount of concern about that as conversations arose during 2019 and 2020. So the first tenant that we have with this plan, we're not selling the land. The, and also the caller made a comment about the state of our parks. I would put this, I would put the state of our parks up against any city in the surrounding area. I think Director Solis and his team do an admirable job, given the limitations, the funding limitations that we have here in the city. I think our parks are top-notch and, and, and I, while, you know, I, I'm a little ruffled by that particular comment because I know how hard Director Solis and his team worked to keep those parks going, given our shortcomings on funding. Regarding the other caller, yes, we will be happy to talk with the folks at the Sacramento County Fair. We heard about that as well. I think that our staff actually had preliminary conversations with them a little while ago. And I'm still digging into what the result was regarding the city and our reaction to their proposal. And that last caller also indicated that, you know, we should have a plan that, that, that speaks to the pulse of the community. And I'm with you. And that's why after this meeting, Director Hoffman, Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez, myself, and Director Solis, when we can get them, we'll be going out on a little tour. And we'll be briefing all of the commissions and committees that report up to council as well as all of these other community groups to get their feedback to make sure that the plan we bring back to the council in June reflects the pulse of the community. And while that caller indicates that it may be a bit grandiose or maybe a bit too visionary, we have to, this community deserves this kind of amenity. And we wouldn't have designed it this way if we didn't think we deserved it. And so we're happy with the level of amenities and, you know, and regarding the insurance liability, we'll work out those details as the phase approaches. Again, this is a 20-year plan. And let me, let me step back even further. This is a visioning exercise. Okay, no one's breaking ground. There's no ceremonies. This is just a visiting plan to prove that the California Energy Commission that we have seriously thought about what we could do with the market, and we think it's a viable plan. And if council chooses to act on it, great. If council doesn't choose to act on it, then we will look at other measures. But we have an issue with the Galt Market. And you will see how that issue manifests itself when we get to the long-term financial plan later in this meeting. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
I actually, I'd like to go ahead and start off with some comments, and then I'll, I'll, I'll go around to the council, see if anybody has, and I'll give council more than one opportunity to speak so we can try to, you know, if you have some things to say, you could, you know, we can do it in intervals. But I, first I want to touch on the market a little bit. Well, first I want to start off by saying, I, I do agree with Mr. Hines on the state of our, our parks at the moment. You know, I'm not going to lie. Everybody here knows that we were struggling big time the last couple of years. I think we were on the right track with the parks. I, I do want to commend Mr. Solis and his staff for the work that they've been doing. I've been watching very closely, and he knows how picky and meticulous I am about nitpicking small things. And I, I, if, if, I wouldn't say that if I didn't think we were making good progress and doing their job. So I just want to say that starting off. But I want to talk about the market a little bit because I really think that's really the reason we're here. I mean, if the market was making $5 million a year, still, we wouldn't be having this conversation at all. So I, I want to talk about the staff report just briefly. You know, looking at the surveys, I, I spent a lot of time reading this as I was traveling back out of state, riding passenger through miles and miles of open desert. And so one thing came to mind is the amount of people, you know, 45% don't come to the market. And then it actually further emphasized that there's very little local participation in the market. And, and, and although the, the survey doesn't state why, because that wasn't asked, I, I think it's very easy to say, and I would like to throw my two cents on why that is. And why that is is because we're a veteran community, and we don't have, people in Galt don't go to the market because most of them can't. I mean, we, we go to work and we travel many outside the community. The other reason is, is I don't believe that we have the right type of thing that a lot of people are looking for that they get at other markets. You know, the other graph said that 34% come for the produce and 23% come for the experience. So combined, you have 57% between produce and experience, which would lead me into my comments about the e-commerce statements, which I completely disagree with. And I think that e-commerce has very little to do with the Galt Market. And the reason I say that is because, as clearly I just stated, 57% go for produce. This is not something people buy on the internet. And 23% come for the experience, which is not something they get on the internet. People go on Amazon. No one goes on Amazon and says, oh, I'm going to see what's for sale on Amazon today, and then just browse. They go for something specific. They type in, you know, I'm looking for shoes or whatever, and they look for something specific. People go to markets like the Lodi Street Fair or the Alameda Antique Fair or Sacramento Antique Fair, the Mantica Market, or, you know, all these markets, the Stockton Swap Meet. They go to these places to see what's there for sale. Hey, we're going to go for the experience and let's see what's for sale there. They don't really, they're going to buy something that maybe they didn't even know they wanted until they see it. These are not things that are affected by e-commerce. I think we're convoluted. We're trying to come up with, we're grasping at straws of why is the market declining? Why is it this and that? I just don't, I don't believe that narrative at all. I look at this other thing here, and I have my notes here on the, the words thing that has, and this word here jumps out at me the most, and it says outdated. What we have here with, somebody mentioned in the public comment is we have a 70-year, 70-year-old business plan, started in 1950. And it's 2021, 70 years, same plan, Tuesday, Wednesday, same concept. I mean, we've done a few new things here and there, but I, I don't think, and, and I know that, you know, it takes money to do things. And I don't, you know, specifically blame anybody Pacific-specific. But I mean, i- it's, I just think that the core issue here is the market. That's what we're talking about. And to say that we have, I was in Texas on vacation, and I had a relative say to me, do you guys still have that flea market there in Galt? And I said, yeah, we do. I mean, this is someone who doesn't even live in this state. Remember that there was a flea market in Galt. We have an iconic market. It's known all around. And I think we are just hurting ourselves to not consider that we need to challenge these other markets in a different way. I mean, we, we've been, we've been bleeding money for 16 years since 2005, 16 years. And we're still grasping at, you know, there's, there's that saying about insanity, you know, something like, you know, doing things the same way all the time, expecting a different result. I feel like that's where we're at right now. And, and I think that, you know, aside from the plan, I, I know this is a long-term visioning plan, and there's, and there's parts of it that I really like. And there's some parts of it I'm not a big fan of, and which I'll talk about that in a minute. But I, I think that really what needs to be the focus here is the plan. You talked about, Mr. Hines, you talked about the intersection of the two lines. And when I look at this plan, I see these phases. They're five to 10-year phases, which the staff report says each phase is five to 10 years. So in phase one, we have housing, and then we have a restaurant and a hotel. So that's phase one. So if, if I'm clear, you said earlier in the presentation that you foresee these lines intersecting, which means the market will now be in the, in the gray, in the red by next year or the year after at the soonest. But you have a presentation here that's basically acting like we're going to do some other things, you know, for, for five, 10 years, and then phase two, which could be 10 years from now, then we're going to start addressing the market. There won't be a market at that point. We, we can't wait, we can't even wait three years to do something with this market. We need to be acting now with the market. We need to be coming up with viable and very deliberate plans for the market and what we're going to do. And if that is parallel with a plan such as this, where we're going to, you know, run parallel thing, where we try to solve our immediate issue with the market and try some bold new things, and, and really just think outside the box or, you know, and then eventually the market changes into, morphs into maybe what you proposed, then that, that might be a solution. But that's my thoughts at this point. I have some other things to say, but I'm going to move on to another council member to give everybody else a chance to speak. So we'll go to our vice mayor, Mr. Sandu, please, if you have any comments. If not, we can move on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You gave me the opportunity. First of all, I would like to thank you all the public comment. They bring it to us. There's a very important, especially with me. That's the way we can learn what the community wants, what the, because especially, thank you for Mr. Denier. Thank you for Mr. Sam Mitchell, Domington. They're living this city for a long time, and I know what they're feeling. And, and I know they want to good for the city. And that's same thing with the council. We want to done something good for the city. On the second thing, I'm going to point out a couple of things, then I, I like to move the other council member. One thing on the report, it's a public outreach in 2019. There's a lot of, they mentioned Park Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Galt Chamber, all these public outreach, and most of them I was on that public outreach. This public outreach is a lot of, lot of citizens spoke against this plan. This plan is not just came up. It is back in this plan. I know there is a little bit changed to this plan. It came, is it from 2017 and 19? And then especially on that report, it says, unfortunately, shortly after the first public forum occurred, a shelter-at-home order was issued due to the COVID-19. For example, if it is, and we all know that, this plan was last year when passed, and it was going to the Assembly Bill. And then, and I was kind of thinking, I'm going to say myself, because I was against that plan, it was fortunate to me, I get a second chance to address something on this plan. And there might be some citizens getting a second chance. So, and the other thing on, on that plan, I like to thank you for Mr. Hines because he did some changes on AB 3773. And in, in, in that, on the staff report, it's very clear. And he mentioned something, he's not going to do anything on AB 3773 until we all are satisfied with the visioning plan. And, you know, that, that property, we all know that property was a gift to this city. And sometimes, I know, this is, this is a 40 or 45 acre in the middle of the town is a gold mine. We all understand. But this is a gift. So sometimes gift is more value than actually value. So I, I did understand all the public comment. And then also, I also understand from 2005, the Galt Market, the revenue go down. The Galt market, the revenue go down and we have to do something. If we don't do anything, that's nobody's fault, it's us. Whoever, we are right now as a council member or whoever a previous council. If we don't do any action before, we need to take action. As same, like and I piggyback with Mr. Mayor. If we losing from any place, if any business losing any money. Then the owner or the manager looking day and night what we need to do. Within six month, they need to do something. I, I, I understand with the Mr. Uh, Solis. You know, sometime is hard to do it, but sometime change is hard, but we need to try. We need to do something because this twenty acre or ten acre at this time, we're using only two days a week. And all of those five days is nothing though. If there is something do, we should do that first. Before anything else. And I did understand staff or thank you staff, they spend a lot of time and also spend. You know, some grant money, hundred and maybe thirty thou- thousand. And then one might, uh, maybe question I will ask Mr. Heinz, how much money we already spent on that and how much left from hundred and thirty? This might be is later on I will, uh, you know, Mr. Heinz, uh, let you. Uh, then also, then my, one more thing is really concerned me in housing element. You know, in, 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 in this plan, housing element. Uh, I know, uh, the staff said we're gonna talk to the consultant. If we not selling. The land is can be very hard to somebody buy. That housing on a land lease is, is not that many example out there. Same thing. Uh, you know, I had my experience on the hotel, let me put this way. I don't see any hotel in Galt on a land lease. I don't see any hotel. In Algrove in the land lease, there might be one or two hotels in Sacramento, I aware of that, they are a land lease. It's very hard to operate or own a city. To like in land lease, especially residential area. And then, and also my also concern on that plan, when we is, uh. Is like in senior housing. And the young people. How, how we going to combine and then also this look like after they develop everything. It can be like a very kind of big kind of shopping center. And you know, it is a corner that shopping center is, is, is the corner, there's a residence. It is to my opinion, it can be very hard. So there is these kind of my bullet point, but let me, I'm gonna ask Mayor if he can give a chance to the next, uh, council member. Then I will, I might come back. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vanderburg, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um. My concern is, I mean.
Actually, excuse me, sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Vanderburg. Councilmember Papin, I'm supposed to be next. I went out of order. I apologize.
No problems.
Councilor Papin, now please.
All right, thanks. Stay by the rules. Um, thank you for the, uh, the presentation. And I wanted to explore a little bit more of the long-term land lease. I certainly appreciate. Uh, the city maintaining the land and not, not selling it. I think that's, it's our. Uh, best long-term asset used that way. Um. Would this be a situation where a certain piece of land, say, uh, one that's gonna house? Uh, the, one of the housing areas, that would be leased by the city. To a builder who would, uh, be responsible for building and then. Would those be, um, I mean, if they were single family, be, uh, leased, leased out or rented out. By that, that builder who would then maintain the responsibility for upkeep. Uh, the, and, and also be responsible for the liability of anything that happens on that. Um, because obviously it's a lease, they wouldn't have the ability to actually sell a property on their to, to a home buyer. Um, am I understanding that or can you kind of go into that a little further?
Sure, uh, well, the exact details of the land lease is a conversation that we will be. Uh, having with the housing consultant that we will hope that one of our partners, uh, that we're actually briefing later this week. Will refer us to, and so this will give us an idea to, give us an opportunity. To bring these types of land lease configurations in front of that housing consultant. And they can give us some ideas as to what would work and what wouldn't work, what works in the area and what hasn't worked in the area. And then at that time, we can find out exactly, uh, whether the land lease option is a viable option. I think it is, uh, but again, um, I, I'd, I'd rather, I, I wanna talk with a professional in that area.
Okay, yeah, and then, yeah, and that's the information I'm looking forward to. So I'll be looking forward to, to hearing what you find out on that. And then, uh, kind of, I'm, I'm glad the mayor brought up the, the Lodi Street Fair. Um, and I was trying to think of things that I've seen that, that local people may have also seen. And I think that what makes that a success, um, from the, the times I've been to it. Is that you have, you know, we close off the street and they have a place where these vendors can set up. And conduct business, but it's not just them. Uh, all of the other regular city amenities and all the other city merchants and stuff benefit from that. So there's, there's an attraction. It's not just that we're trying to, you know, set up vendors as we are now on weekdays out in. You know, on a paved lot, you know, which doesn't seem to be working. Um, so, you know, I, I like that as an example. Of something that might work and might actually bring, uh, vendors to an area like. This or like the Lodi Street Fair away from something like, you know, Denios or whatever that's well-established for the weekends. The one thing I'd. Like to think about is how to, how to do something like that sooner, as a couple of people have mentioned. Um, you know, how do we make the, the market more viable and more productive? In the shorter term and I think, you know, obviously that is a, is a good answer to. Put the market where there's other things that will attract people to be there, to be in the area. And as the mayor said, to, you know, buy that thing they didn't know they even wanted. Um, so, you know, as we move forward, kind of. Looking at the plan, if there's ways that we can, uh, work toward getting those changes to the market sooner. Um, you know, or we may be in a position. Which unfortunately, if the market does not survive. Um, you know, we have to have a plan that can function absent it too and, uh. You know, we gotta, gotta kind of look that way and, you know, hopefully, uh, support the market and, uh. As, as soon as we can. Um, one of the other things I like. Uh, to, uh, consider as we move forward, thinking about this and all of our development, but this in particular. Since it's close to the, the city center is the life cycle of housing in Galt that we've talked about. Um, you know, and I in particular see a lot of, uh, early twenty people, uh, twenty-year-olds right now. That if they're lucky enough to land work in Galt, um, there's no place to live. There's nothing that they can afford to rent. Uh, they're certainly not gonna be able to buy right off the bat. Um, you know, and it, and if, if we go forward with something. That creates these businesses, um, both here and other businesses expand. I'd like to see city center developments like this ensure that it's something that. Uh, we can have the, the life cycle that they can work in Galt. They don't have to go rent in Lodi or Algrove until they can afford to. Come back here and, and buy a house. Um, you know, so, uh, that's kind of, kind of my thoughts and, uh, and the one question there. So, uh, that'll be it for now.
Okay, um, Councilman Vanderburg, we have a couple of staff members with hands up. Um, would you? Like to go ahead and give some of your comments or would you like to let one of them or both of them speak before you go? What would you like to do?
Let, let both of them speak, please.
Okay, um, Mr. Solis, I believe you had your hand up first. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Council. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. When you talk about the Lodi Street Fair and, and fairs like that, you're talking about a one-time-a-year event. People, you know, it's kind, kind of like a strawberry festival or county, county fair. It's a one. It's a one-time-a-year event. Um, or when you see these antique shows, they're not on a regular basis, weekly basis. Um, and I also want to make a point that, uh, the Galt market is still making over two million dollars a year. In revenue, uh, we are clearing close to a million dollars a year. Um, we are not, this market is not doing the nose dive. We're, the expenditures from the parks are going up. But we are still making money on the, on the market itself. Um, I don't want there to be this thing that, you know, because I've heard people say, oh, the market, you know, it's, it's poor management. It's not being run properly. You're losing money. Close it down. Why are we open? Well, we are making money. So I just wanted to make those two points. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. Mr. Mendez?
Good evening. I, um, just wanted to mention really quick. I know that Councilmember Papin now had asked about the. Housing component and. The Community Development Director and I have met a couple of times with developers who've been interested in developing rental communities. And so I think the idea behind the housing development component. If the interest of the city is not to sell property, then they've had these ideas where we could. Um, do developments where it's strictly like a rental community. So for sale detached or. For rent detached housing communities that a developer would actually construct. And maintain, they would collect rent from the tenants, but the land lease would be a long-term land lease. And I believe that, I know Kimberly's not on the phone, but the city attorney has mentioned in the past that cities could do. Um, fifty-year land leases and, you know, that's potentially something that we could look at on the rental community side. Um, with the property for residential development. Now, as it, you know, relates to the. Market itself, you know, I think everybody agrees that we need to adapt with the retail. Um, market as it's evolved over the years and really. The experience is what everybody is looking for. So how do you bring people in? On the weekend? How do you bring people in so they want to stay? Right now, they come in on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, they shop and they leave. How do you get them to stay so that they go downtown, that they venture into areas of the community that they wouldn't normally go into? And so that really is the idea, you know, behind this concept is. And this isn't gonna happen overnight. This is obviously something that we're looking at as a conceptual plan. Into the future, things could change at any time. Retail changes all the time. This pandemic has completely transformed the way that people shop. And so, you know, what this looks like twenty years down the road, I think is completely different than. What we're looking at right now, but the idea is to be open to change and to. Really enhancing the market so people want to be there, so people want to come. That may be that the market transforms into a weekend market. It may be just a Friday night market. It may be. You know, something different that will be have right now, but really wanting to adapt to what the retail. Um, market is now and what it's going to be in the future. And, you know, it's, we've heard a lot of people speak tonight who have given sort of the negative about this. And from an economic development perspective, we have to be open to new ideas. Otherwise. This market is going to go away and I think that, um, right now we do have a great opportunity. To take the, um, folks that come on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and try to keep them here so that they venture into the downtown. But also to enhance the market through the years so that folks have a reason to come here in the evenings or have a reason to. You know, stay and it, it's something different, I think, than any other community offers. And so. I just, uh, kind of wanted to touch on that so folks understand kind of what the idea is moving forward. Um, from an economic development perspective, but also on the residential component.
Clarifications there, I appreciate that and, uh, yeah, you know, I understand that, uh, you know, that the Lodi Street Fair is a. You know, a once-a-year thing, but it's kind of, you know, the, the same theory, you know, we can bring something. Uh, of our city together with the, the vendors for the market. I think, you know, the sooner the better and we have a, a good chance of. Helping it to become, uh, you know, very productive again. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you for those comments. I know Mr. Hoffens got his hand up, um, but I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Vanderburg go just a sec, but. Just want to say real quick to Amy Mendez's comments, you're absolutely right. We need to be thinking outside the box and. And we need to be open-minded to things and. To say that very sentence in respects to the narrative of the plan that we presented with. But to then not honor that same exact concept when we're talking about changing what we're doing with the market. And being open to other ideas with changing what we're doing with it now as far as weekend operation and stuff. I feel like you're just, we're kind of picking and choosing which, oh, we're gonna be open-minded here, but oh no, we can't be open-minded over here because. That's not gonna, whatever. So I just want to remind you, this is what we're suggesting is being open-minded. Councilmember Vanderburg, go ahead and then I'm gonna let Craig speak after, um, that, if that's okay with Mr. Lozano or we can wait till the end for Craig. Go ahead, Jake.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we've heard repeatedly over the years that the market is, is. For whatever reason is, uh, continuing to lose revenue. My concern is that. The solution per, or these five-year chunks and we'll be too far down the line. Uh, to save the market by the time we actually, if we get there, um. So I, I'd like to see a more proactive approach. Uh, when it comes to the weekend, you know, Manteca. Just opened like two years ago, opened up a flea market. I, I don't think it's a failing business model by a long shot. As far as come, people coming to the weekend, I know two people personally that went and spoke to vendors and. They would be quite willing to not move, but expand their business because you're not asking them to move from their current money-making position. To come down here to take a chance. You're asking them, you're giving them more likely, more better way to put it, you're giving them an opportunity to expand their business. To make more money, but for them, it's, it's, they have to buy a truck and just spread their produce or their, their product a little thinner. And, you know, have a little more overhead. That's not that hard for them, but they're not willing to invest the five grand or six grand. To do that, if Galt is only willing to open the flea market up for a month. That's, that's a, just a not a wise investment as a business person. If Galt needs to commit to at least a year minimum of having the market open on the weekends. Then as a business owner, you're willing to take the opportunity to expand your business to multiple markets at the same time. So. The county fair, I think, is very important to how or what may happen to this land if. Let's say that the county fair is coming here. Well, that would greatly alter or determine. What and how we must allocate the land to accommodate the county fair every year. So, um. Beyond that, I want to hear a lot more feedback from the people. I, I'm looking forward to, I would like to see more. Town halls and get more feedback. Beyond that, I'll, I'll let the next person go.
Okay, Councilman Lozano, do, would you like to go next or do you want me to let Craig speak?
No, Mr. Hoffman can go. I'm, I'm quite certain that Mr. Hoffman's not gonna be addressing anything that I have to say.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what Amy had to say. You know, over the last year, we're really seeing developers wanting to do something different. Land cost is starting to really go up and it really affects the type of housing that they're building. The cost of that housing and so. I'm not as hesitant to say that a land lease doesn't work because again, as Amy indicated. We're starting to get some developers that are thinking about housing a lot differently. Some of them aren't looking to, to sell. They do want to hold. So a lease option. It means it's an upfront cost that they don't have to provide. We do have a meeting with CACOG, uh, tomorrow. I'm looking forward to that. Not only are they experts in housing, but they're also experts in. Understanding what the housing needs of the region are. They're seeing it, you know, what does Galt need to provide and. And how do we fit within a, in a bigger reason, region? So they're the experts and I'm looking forward to, to working with them. In part of what I'm hearing tonight, it took a long time to get this, uh, this visioning exercise before the council. And just getting feedback, it's an opportunity to talk and start to exchange. in just getting feedback. It's an opportunity to talk and start to exchange ideas back and forth. And that's really what we want to do is is have this type of discussion and next steps. We'll see what the next steps are.
Thank you, Craig. Councilmember Lozano, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. I do have quite a list here. I won't repeat questions. Certainly one that Councilmember Papano brought up about the long term lease. That's an interesting concept. When Mr. Hines first kind of told me about it, I was like, huh, how does that work? So I, that's, that's interesting. Here's, here's what I take. Let me just back up a little bit. And I'll let you guys have a little piece of, a little insight to what I, how I think and what I'm thinking. As you know, a couple of years ago, when this first started to become a topic of conversation, one of the things I was very, very adamant about was not closing any doors until we absolutely have to. And and that is trying to keep an open mind about, you know, what that looks, what that area looks like in the future. I certainly believe that the community and in the best interest of the city at this point is not to sell any property. But but certainly I think we can do a lot with that area that we certain, that we haven't in the past. Two things I heard. One is a visioning plan. The visioning plan, I don't necessarily agree with every piece of it. But you know what? It's a good start. Here's what I heard from at least people that I know in the community. Back when we had the town hall, a common theme that people said was, how could you have a plan when you don't have a plan? That's what they said. Why are we discussing this when you're telling us you don't have a plan? So then we bring a visioning document forward that is not necessarily a plan, but it's a start. And now I'm hearing that we don't like that start. And so I certainly want to hear from more of the community in the next few months about what this looks like to them. But the other thing I heard, I'll just leave that piece there. The other thing I heard from Mr. Hines over my last, I don't know, two or three months of one on one meetings and 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 the presentation earlier that he provided all council members of this plan of the presentation was the market is not going away. And so to to look at it in a bifurcated sense, I don't think is appropriate. And I think it's easy to get sidetracked with looking at one or the other. And 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 I would agree with the mayor. We need to do something with that market. Quite honestly, the last two times that I've been there, and not that it's mismanaged or anything like that, it's just old. And and it's, it's, it's not as attractive. So I think there's some things that we can do. The fact that this visioning plan looks at a a vision of the next five years and then 10 years in five year increments, I think is perfect. I would agree with my colleagues that we need to do something more immediately with the market to increase revenue. But that, does that mean that we disregard the vision of the next five or 10, 15 years down the road? And I, I think that answers no. I think we don't disregard that. I think we keep moving forward. We have a great staff. I, you know, we, there are times and I, and I have to apologize to people after meetings because I, I kind of come across sometimes that I'm not real happy with staff and I, and I am very happy with the work that our staff does. And so, and we do have a good staff. I think that that it was mentioned tonight by a couple of my colleagues about, you know, we may be running on an old business plan from, from many years ago. I don't know how many, but so that's one piece of it. But this visioning document is, in my mind, at least from where we were a little over a year ago in a community meeting that I think all of the sitting council members were at. I certainly know four of us were, because I talked to four of us there that day to today is putting something on paper. Now, whether the housing happens or not, you know, I don't know. But do I think it's important that we revitalize that area and do something that will connect our downtown that we've spent years and a lot of money putting, trying to improve? Absolutely. Do I think that Galt is segmented? It is now segmented. It is now, but with a connection that people can walk and bike or do whatever they're going to do in this area connected with our downtown area, I think is important. I also think, and and again, I'll get off my soapbox here in a minute because I know other folks want to talk, but I also think that this will increase the amount of influence on local property owners that may own commercial properties in the area that we've recently heard complaints from their tenants and for from the community. It could potentially pu- push them in a direction to improve their property. So I see it as as much larger than just, this is what we're going to do, because that's not what I heard tonight. What I heard tonight was we've went out, we've talked to the youth commission, the commission on aging, we've talked to community groups, we've talked to individuals, we've talked to elected officials, we've talked to all these people, and this is kind of the vision that we're seeing. It's our job as a council to say, no, that's not the vision you're seeing, or, you know, hey, yeah, go forward and at least let's explore it some more. And and I'm real happy with that. And I want to thank Mr. Hines and staff. I know all the staff has put their, their time and energy into this. And we at least, we at least have something. We have a visioning document. And the community wanted that. That's what I heard the last time we went out to the community was we can't, how are you asking us what we want when you don't even have a plan? And now we have a visioning document. Again, not quite a plan, but but I think we're getting there. And I like the fact the market's not going away. You know, throughout this whole phased approach, we see the market in each piece of that base, each phase of that, of that plan, of that vision plan. And so what can we do? My direction, because that's what the staff report asked for is some discussion and direction. One of five members, my direction would be, hey, let's, let's do what we can immediately to increase the revenue. Whether the revenue is dropping over time because of e-commerce or because people are lazy and don't want to go, or people don't have the right products out there, or whatever it is, let's fix that as we go immediately. But also, let's push, push this out to the community in a little more depth and get the feedback. I would, and I appreciate the folks that wrote in. And we did get an email from Mr. De Nier at about 10:52 this morning, and I read it. I wish there would have been a little more in there, like, we should be doing this instead or something like that, but we'll get that. We will get that. So I really look forward to seeing what, if not, if not a piece of this visioning document, then what my question would be to the community? Or what, if you do like this, how can we integrate it? And so those are just my thoughts. I like the fact that we're doing a phased approach and that we're looking for an experience. I think we do have some housing issues and whether that plays into this long term visioning or not. It's at least, let's, I would say it's a good idea to at least keep our mind open to it. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but but at least we're moving forward. So thank you to staff. Thank you to my colleagues for all of your comments. Because they're, they're important, you know, and and let's, let's, I would suggest moving forward and and at least, you know, grabbing both of those bull, that bull by both horns, not just one and getting thrown off. So, all right, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano. And and I actually agree with many things that you said, and I, I think I'm hearing a common theme with some things. You know, I understand that this is a visioning, you know, and and this is something that could take place in 20 years. Again, as some of you have stated, there's pieces of it that I don't, that I'm not a big fan of. I, I'm struggling with the housing part of it, just because I it seems to be the part that all the people I've spoken with today, at least, I tried to reach out and get a lot of input, weren't, weren't big fans of. But again, this is, input is something we're going to be getting over time, hopefully in the next few weeks and and hopefully we'll take that, all that input to heart. But also, you know, what, what, what Mr. Solis said earlier, I understand the market, it still makes good, the market still does, it makes a million dollars. I mean, you know, we all in this, in this virtual room here, and those watching at home that have lived here a certain amount of time. We know that in, ideally, you know, most cities will fund their pension rec department, and it'll come from the general fund, most of it, and some of the programs recoup. Well, you know, in Galt, we just, unfortunately, we use the market as a crutch for many, many years. And we leaned on it and we depended on it. And we've got ourselves behind the eight ball, so to speak. And now we, we look at the market as being the fault. Like, why, you know, it's the market's fault. It's not making what it did. What are we going to do? When, you know, it's too bad because really where we should be at is the market should be extra million dollars we're making each year. And what are we going to do? This million, we're going to build a teen center, we're going build a senior center, we're going to revamp this or that. That's what the conversation should be. Unfortunately, the way our budget has developed over the last 30 years, we're no longer, that's, that ship has sailed and nobody in this room is responsible for that. But what we are responsible for is not kicking that, that can down the road further and saying, well, you know, the market's doing good and yeah, you know, but also we have to look as a glass half full and a glass half empty approach to this. And 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 we are, we are responsible, at least, you know, I don't know how much longer, you know, I'm going to be serving this community in my capacity. But I have, you know, 18 months, almost two years left, and I, in that two years, don't expect to waste that time. And I, I think that, I think something, something like this visioning plan, maybe, you know, I think it's got good bones. I, there's pieces of it I very like. I think as we get more input, we're going to, it's going to slowly evolve and you kind of get a feel of what people like and what they don't, and then maybe we can kind of tweak it. And and I'm optimistic that come June, maybe there's some things that we all can agree on and and we can come up with, you know, something that maybe we're all willing to accept. But I think that's a second, second conversation. I think what this has led to is the, is the focal conversation here is the market. And and we clearly know that we cannot just sit idly by and we cannot wait for phase two of this visioning plan to somehow come in with, you know, a cape on and rescue the market because we, you know, it's going to be too far. Five years is going to be too far. I mean, we just, we have to do something now. And I think we need to think outside the box. We need to be open minded, like Ms. Mendez said. I think we need to figure out how we can do that. How can we come up with a plan to do that? You know, how can we get creative? How can our city manager get creative and say, okay, how can we, you know, find something to, you know, you know, inject some funding in and do some things immediately? And maybe we start on a weekend and we keep our Tuesday Wednesdays, where we evolve. I believe we're going to find new vendors. I believe some vendors, I've spoken to lots of vendors that would be more than happy to come to Galt in a weekend. They've told me that we don't charge parking and we don't charge admission, and that's something that nobody else does. So it's something we have that we can offer. And as Mr. Vanderburgh said, you know, I even heard some vendors say, well, I'd be wanting to do a second truck and have a guy work in that market and have a guy work in that. So, you know, we can't just close that off and say, oh, that will never work because unless we give it, you know, give it our, you know, our full, full try and and commit to it for a long, you know, commit to a solid year, just give it all we got and say, this is what we got. I, I think we'd be doing our disservice because we've been operating on the same thing for a long time and clearly it's not working. I mean, it's, it's still making a lot of money. I'm not going to discount that it does, but but we can't just rest on our laurels, I guess, would be maybe a good, and and just be comfortable with that because clearly, as Mr. Hines knows, we're, we're going to get into some trouble. So, you know, I appreciate the plan. I do like, I, I agree with the experience part of it. I think that's going to be a piece of it. I think that's, but I think we got, we got good bones with this, this, this presentation. I think we have, you know, good bones with the market and it's a viable source that we should, we should not be quick to dismiss. But we need to make rash moves. If this, if this, this is a business and any business that has been bleeding money for 16 years would not have waited to do something. And shame on the previous council, shame on me for my last the first two years of my, shame for the council before that and that. We should have done something sooner. If there was a city council that somehow said no to weekend operation, or they were, you know, shot down any ideas that, you know, Mr. Solis or any staff had had, then if you're watching out there, then shame on you because I think you were complacent in that thought process. And so, but I'm not going to sit idly by and and do nothing. So that's where I'm at with this. I think it was a good discussion. Does any, I like to go back around, Mr. Hines, if you would like to speak, and then maybe you can see if any council wants to speak one more time.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate that we'll be taking this plan out to the community and getting, I, I like what that caller said, getting the pulse of the community. This plan as it stands right now is based on conversations that I and the staff have had with citizens here in Galt. And this is the, this is the plan that we've come up with. We're going to be speaking to, as I mentioned, all of the commissions and committees. We'll be speaking to some of our community groups here in Galt. We'll be speaking to CACOG to get their thoughts on this process. And we'll also be speaking with the county to get their thoughts. So we're going to be soliciting opinions from all over. And if, and we'll be bringing you back those opinions in June. Again, I wanted to reiterate one more time for those folks listening, this is a visioning exercise. And and as Councilman Lozano says, we have a plan. Now, it may not be perfect for everyone, but it's a start. And so we're going to bring this out to the community. We're going to take, have them take a look at it, remind everybody this is a visiting plan. I have not been directed by staff or have not been directed by council, excuse me, to do zoning amendments, plan changes, break ground. I have not been asked to do any of that. This is just a conversation and we want to see how we can maximize our city center. And I agree with all of the council comments regarding expediting efforts to help the market. And that's one of the conversations I'll be having with some of our funding partners to see how quickly some of these items in the first phase can happen. Does it take five years? Can we get it done sooner? And we'll be looking at other efficiencies in the market as well. I have to, I have to admit, I'm still in month eight here at Galt, so we're still digging into the efficiencies of all departments. But I'll be, I'll look forward to working with Director Solis and his team to see what we can do. But for right now, I, I like this plan. I think it's subject to change. I like it because it represents, it represents all the conversations I've had with folks since I've been here since August. And I've heard the issues about around housing, both for the younger folks and the seniors. I've heard the issues that there's nothing to do. We don't want to go to Elk Grove. We don't want to go to Lodi to just have a good time and have dinner with my family. And I know we have restaurants here. But I wanted to give folks some more entertainment options and to keep folks here in Galt. And I think this plan, this plan does that. And so again, when we come back to you in June, we will come back and it may look different. But matter of fact, I'm pretty confident it will look different. And we'll explain to you what happened and why we changed. And perhaps by that time, we, we will also have some, I'll call it very preliminary data on how we could pull off some of these things. Because we're going to have conversations with partners and look at funding options in that, those intervening two months as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Just, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would like to ask Mr. Hines, the public outreach. I know right now there is, we cannot have a gathering, but I believe in it very soon. You know, we all heard today from the governor. I like to be, you know, it's like in public, be like in public forum. Maybe call two, three, meeting the public forum, question and answer, and the feedback. And I like to also, whatever meeting you have, get a feedback. And that's why it was last time, it was not that transparency. So when you have any group, you have a public outreach, please give us a feedback, what the public said.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I was just trying to think of ideas. I know what Vice Mayor said about, you know, the challenge of having open forums. I mean, I know there's, you know, we have got some loosen restrictions and stuff, but you know, maybe we could do some like Facebook Live type thing. It's supposed to be, I don't know, I'd be interested in hearing some creative ideas about how we could have a virtual open forum, a community forum, at least one, where people could, you know, do like this, raise their hand and speak and just an ongoing thing. It's not, not just a limited basis. But anyways, about to have track. Does any other council member have any comments they would like to bring back regarding our discussion here? Right, Councilmember Vanderburgh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, put it out there that I do appreciate that we're not selling the land. And moreover, there was no mention of loss of the pool or the skate park or the Chipotle Center. I know that was a bone of contention the last time around that they were just going to wipe. the last time around that they were just going to wipe all those amenities out and, you know, we're, I didn't see anywhere. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're keeping all of those items. Uh, so that's a good thing. Uh, no one thing in here is, is a requirement, you know, it's, it's, uh, we're looking to do something. And then I would have one question that I think should be answered and I, it's my present understanding that the city of Galt has a very low like retail or business, uh, units per capita. And I think that would be important for the public to know and the, the council to know what is a normal ratio. If, if we have, let's say a hundred and the normal size for a thirty thousand population city is, should be two hundred, you know, where do we, where do we land on that? Because it's my understanding from, uh, staff that many people in Galt, business owners would move if they could, but they cannot. That's all.
We'll work to get to that information, Councilman. I'll work with, uh, uh, Economic Development Manager Mendez to get you that information.
Yeah. I can tell you that, um, based on some research I did about eighteen months ago with City of Lowdy using as a coast comparison because they're our neighbors and looking at everything like per capita. Um, I think it was twenty-three or twenty-four percent. Uh, Lowdy had twenty-three or twenty-four percent more businesses per capita than Galt. And we were about three thousand dollars per year spending within our community and Lowdy was about fifteen thousand. So we're, we're, we're way under keeping our tax dollars in and being behind on business per capita. I, that's just of like eighteen months ago. I can tell you that's from my research. I don't know if that's
Part of why I say that is specifically to get it out to the public, you know, that should be part of the decision-making process.
Does any, uh, other council member have any further comments? Okay. So, yeah, I just want to, just want to, yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, just, just, uh, to kind of, to, to wrap that up. Yeah, I agree with, uh, with what the mayor said that, you know, there's good bones. And we have something to work within and very much looking forward to hearing, uh, ideas and what people think can be as opposed to just, it won't work. So I'm really looking forward to, uh, a couple of months of some positive input. Thank you.
Thank you and totally agree. Uh, Rose, do we have, uh, you have a question or do you have a hand raised online?
We have a hand raised, uh, hand raised online.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Harry Wenzel. Go ahead and unmute your mic and you have five minutes.
Uh, thank you. I'll try not to take the five minutes. Um, the composition of the council has changed. And I just wonder if we could get an update on the legislation. I mean, is it going to be withdrawn to take the protections off of the market? That would be my first point.
Currently, Mr. Wenzel, the, the, the old legislation has expired and so it would be up to the council to give direction to either, um, and you can jump in and correct me if this is wrong, Mr. Heinz, but, uh, if, if the, so, if the council is so directed to request, um, that same legislation or new to be brought forward based on some plan or visioning decision we wanted to do, then we would do that. Um, but the old is no longer. I mean, Mr. Heinz, you can correct me on that.
I believe that's the case. Yes.
I know that there was, uh, extensions depending upon certain conditions. I don't know if that is the case or not. But I just bring that up because it was pretty hotly contested, but not discussed tonight. Um, I'd like to also say that we see the graph again. And I guess between the time that I wasn't feeling so well and just starting to get back into it, the market's suddenly going under. Um, I don't think that's the case, but maybe it is. And so on all of these proposals, something that we didn't have last time in the public discussion, but we have promises of it was we were going to see some economics. So let's say, for instance, if you have housing units coming in, that's going to produce so much revenue in theory. Your, your, uh, hotel's going to go in, that's going to produce so much revenue and so forth. And I know there's a million details. This is a big, this is something big with a lot of moving parts. And I would like to see, when you take it out to the public, there's not a lot to talk about other than, well, it's a nice picture and you kind of picture it in your head. And I think that's all well and good, but at the end of the day, we started out with economics as our problem. If the market was making money, I mean, maybe it'd be different. I think another thing that, uh, would be important to get out in front of the public as you go out and I'm look, really looking forward to it. And that would be, are we actually, who are we talking to? I mean, I hear our funding partners, but I don't know who they are. Do we have developers involved and so forth? And I know that was a contested item when we had the Lewis company in there and they were a little more forceful, but I think that would be uh, something that, uh, I think the public would be interested because we're all distrustful really and um, I don't hear anything about the value of Highway ninety-nine, but that is the river. And the riverboats go down that river. And I know that, um, I appreciate, Mr. Heinz, that you've talked to a lot of the citizens here. I tried to do the same thing back then and I know like Sean Farmer and I went down, talked to, and Amy Mendes and I went down, we talked to vendors and there's a lot of ideas there. And I appreciate that. Um, but I guess probably the, maybe one of the number one things, I know Sean, you mentioned something about uh, bleeding money, but Amando, I believe, uh, was the voice of reason tonight where he said it makes a million dollars. And then you came back and said that. And I think that the figure of five million dollars, I don't think we ever saw five million. I think we need to be careful not to just throw a figure out there like five million. So I guess what I'd like to see is just some statistics. I like all of this, you know, the ratio and all of that to get it straight. But I think that, I, I mean, I agree, the staff is really good. The parks are looking better to me. I get out and doing a little walking in them. And, uh, you know, there's a bright future for this, you know, for, for this community. And I appreciate all the hard work council does. So that's all I really have. It's just a little bit of input. It kind of took me by surprise that we were going to get the step tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. And as your question, I do apologize for throwing that five million figure I was referencing, um, that you know, right now the market nets close to a million dollars after its expenses and, and all the things that come out of it. And over the last sixteen years, that, that net was about a million higher, you know, give or take um, than it was now. I don't know what the gross figure was fifteen years or sixteen years ago, but um, it might've been close to five million, but the point I was trying to make is if it was making a lot of money, uh, more money than it makes now, uh, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. So I was just simply trying to make a point that the, the market is really where the, the, the exact focal point needs to be in this. And thank you, Harry, for, um,
Yeah, and that's very appreciated. I know, I know Sean, I know you and I know that, you know, you're concerned about, you know, it's a legacy. It's a, you know, it really is important and it's not something we can just approach and we can't approach it just with numbers. Uh, we can't approach it. Um, it's just got a lot of moving parts to it. And so I look forward to it. It looks like they've got off on a good start here. I appreciate Rich, you know, like, and, and Sean, everybody just trying to keep an open mind about it at this time.
Thank you for your comments, Harry. Appreciate it.
Harry, I, I saw you on the, uh, the attendee side and I was wondering if you were going to talk. Thanks. And I appreciate you taking me out there and introducing me to the, the vendors as well and, and you do learn a lot from people. Uh, I will say, if I could, uh, get a contract book from Mr. Solis and roll around there and, and get them to commit with a deposit and a signature to, to work the weekends. I think that'd be awesome. So, uh, but maybe we'll get there and, and I think it should be done, uh, in, in conjunction with what we're doing with the, uh, the visioning plan.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's a lot of good assets that we have down there. Um, the, the person who's running the market right now, I mean, the, you know, on the ground person, Jackie Garcia, wonderful, wonderful person. Amando's got a lot of knowledge and, you know, you either love him or you hate him if you're a vendor, but they, I think most of them love him. You know, and so he's, he's an asset that you can really leverage there to try and get things going. And he's done a good job with it. It's, it's not an easy job. His job's a very hard job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I have no, I have no further hands raised online.
Okay, okay. Um, so, you, you know, the, I, again, I just want to reiterate what I'm saying about this plan, whatever plan we decide, a visioning, whatever, I just don't want to put too much stock into this is going to be the rescue for the market. I, I think that what this plan, whatever we may or may not agree on and whatever becomes in ten years and thirty years or forty years, when maybe some of us aren't even around anymore or not even alive anymore, maybe, um, it, it is what it is, but I, I, I wouldn't, I don't think we need to depend on that to be what's going to save the market. I think we're talking about two separate parallel trajectories here. Um, so I just want to make that clear. That's my feeling. So, um, we have any, we have no additional public comment. We have no hands raised online. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Roddicker.
No, that's correct. That's correct. No hands raised.
Okay. Does anybody, does anybody, uh, on the council want to make any additional comments before we move on? Okay. Well, I encourage the public to be a part of this process. Uh, it's important. This will be, this could be, you know, if this ever comes fruition, could be the biggest deal ever for the city of Galt and, uh, it's important. So as you see these things posted online by our city staff on social media and in the mail and things, get involved, start watching these meetings. Um, I'm sure that our council will try to do their part to keep everybody informed. And we need to hear from you because this is, uh, your city and we want to do what you want us to do. So, um, with that, we're going to move on um, to our next item here. Shuffle through my papers here. All right. So, um, item two is going to be our Catarina Estates Project Public Hearing. And do I need to open the public hearing before Mr. Hoffman does his presentation, Tina?
He's going to say a couple of words and then
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Hoffman.
Sure. Uh, you know, with Catarina Estates, the expectation from the council was that it was going to be a very open and public process and we've tried to do that. And unfortunately, what we found after the March second meeting, it wasn't, it wasn't noticed the way we needed to. And so we're bringing this back tonight. I'm going to waive my presentation if I could. Uh, what I would ask the mayor to do is to reopen the public hearing, see if we do have any comments. Uh, staff would like to respond back to them and we do have the applicant with us tonight. And then we're looking for the council to reaffirm the resolutions and ordinances that we had, but we do want to make sure that we're opening the public comment and if we have any public comments that we can respond to them. And that's it for me.
Okay. Well, with that, I will go ahead and reopen.
Oh, can, can I just note that if there is public comment or council, you can reconsider this item as well. So the reason for the, oh, for having the public hearing is to be able to look at it and then either ratify or make changes and take whatever the appropriate action council deems it should take.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to reopen the public hearing and then, um, we'll actually hear from council while we're waiting to see if there's anybody, um, online. So I am reopening the public hearing from March second, two thousand twenty-one to receive comments regarding the Catarina Estates Project. Um, while we're, um, open here in this, do we have any comments to start off, Ms. Hubert?
No written comments.
Okay, Ms. Roddicker, do we have anybody hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. Does any of the council want to make comment regarding this item?
Um, yeah, the only thing I would, I, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Hopman, there's nothing changed in this report as previously we approved, I think a couple of weeks ago.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. And nothing further.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, recently there was a accident, F, F and Fourth Street could have been very bad. I was wondering if there's any movement on the change to that intersection.
At this point in time, there's, the project has been conditioned to make modifications to that intersection. As part of the project, they will be required to do a traffic study. And once we get that information in, we'll sit down with, uh, with Public Works. Uh, Mike will be taking a look at that. And that is a condition of approval on the project that has not changed and that's something we will be doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lozano, did you have your hand raised?
I, I did have it raised. I was just going to move the item if it, if everybody was done.
Okay, um, Ms. Roddicker, is there a hands raised online?
We do have a hands raised online and I'm, I'm going to need to have to have, um, Craig, if you could please unmute his line as I gave you permissions. If you could go on to the panelist side and click on him to allow him to talk.
Who is it?
Aiden Barry.
Oh. Let me see. I'm trying to see where he's at.
If you click on the panelist.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm not seeing him, Rose.
How about on the attendee side, excuse me?
Okay. Oh, there he is.
If you would just unmute his lines or he
There he is. And Aiden, I think you're going to, oh, there you are.
Excellent. Thank you. I just wanted to respond back to the, the specific question, if I may. Um, this council, specifically the mayor and the rest of the council have been very clear as to their interest in the analysis of that intersection. Um, and just to give you an update between when we last met and tonight, we've initiated getting a scope of work for a warrants analysis. Um, that process is initiated by our side, then we, um, submit that in draft form to your staff through Public Works. Um, and they will comment as to whether that it's adequate, but we've heard you loud and clear and we've already initiated the scope of work associated with that analysis. So I wanted to give you that update for this evening.
Thank you. Very good news. Does any other council have any further comments? Ms. Steiner, uh, so do I, once I close the public hearing, do we just, are we going to go ahead with all the resolutions together? There looks like there's several.
Previously, we did those independently.
Okay. Harry, you're muted. Harry, your mic is muted.
Sorry. Um, I, I think because you're ratifying the actions that you took before, you could either do them all together or you can do them individually. As Craig said, you did do them individually the first time around.
Okay. All right. So I just want to be clear, we have no hands raised online or written comment, uh, in our public hearing because it's still open. Is that correct, Tina and Rose?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And with no further comment. Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will go to read the resolutions and then I'll look for a motion. So we are looking to approve resolution number, we are looking for a vote on this, right? All, we can do them all together. Is that correct, Harry?
You can do them all together as long, as long as everyone wants to vote the same way and you can, um, so you can start out all together. And you still need to have a roll call vote.
Okay. Does anybody in the council have a problem with us doing them as, as a bulk? No. Okay. All right. So we're looking for a resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight approving the initial study mitigation, negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Catarina Estates Project. Item B, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine approving the general plan amendment of twelve point four acres from LDR to MDR. And item C reintroduced by title only and way further reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero one amending the district zoning map of the city of Galt rezoned twelve point four acres of the Catarina State Project from R one eight to R one two. And D, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one zero approving the tentative subdivision map subdividing the twelve point four acre site into sixty-one single family lots for the Catarina Estates Project. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the prior actions taken by the council on March second, two thousand twenty-one that you just stated.
Okay, so moved by Councilmember Lozano. Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. All right, we will now move on to item three, which is going to be the annexation of territory to the Community Facilities District number two zero, number twenty twenty dash one, Public Services Annexation Number number 2020-1, Public Services Annexation Number One Veranda.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Papino.
Recuse myself from this item as I own a real property within 500 feet of the Veranda project, which may present a conflict of interest for me. So I will log out of meeting and return when the city manager notifies me this item is completed.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Can I get, so do the presentation first before I open the public hearing? Is that correct, Tina?
That is correct.
All right, Mr. Selling, you have a presentation for us?
We just have a brief staff report. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Rose if she can allow Bill Forrest to come in. He can make a brief presentation and then we can move forward with opening the public hearing. Thank you.
If I can have you unmute your mic. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Farmer and council members. This is Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works Department. I'm not gonna, usually I go over the recommendations contained in the staff report. But as they're numerous and quite wordy, I'll just briefly give some particulars about the, this annexation area one, which is the Veranda at River Oaks Project. The land is owned by Elliott Homes. It comprises of 60 lots on 5.6 acres. And it's located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Carillion and Walnut Avenue. Back on February 16th, 2021, the council heard the resolution of intention to annex this territory into the Community Facilities District 2020-1. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Does that conclude the report, Mike?
Yes, Mayor. That concludes our staff report.
Okay, then I will now open the public hearing. And Tina, have we published in accordance with the law, the notice of public hearing and was it mailed?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Thank you. All right, then we already got the report from staff or is there a different report?
No, that's the only report, yeah.
All right. All right. Is there any comments from the city council on this particular item? No comments, okay. All right. Do we have any questions from the public?
We have no hands raised online.
Do we have?
No comments.
No comments and no protests for many persons owning property within the annexation area? No?
No, not online.
Okay. All right. Well, no further comment and no public comment or we will, sorry, I'm just going by my script here. All right. So no further comment. Public testimony will be accepted and we will now close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the council or from staff? If they want to raise their hand, if they do. Okay. So you have no written protests, no comments. We've closed the public hearing. Then city clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number one Veranda of Community Facilities District number 2020-1? And if so, the number thereof?
No, the county of Sacramento registrar voters has certified there are no registered voters within annexation number one Veranda of Community Facilities District number 2020-1.
Okay. And has any owner of any taxable property in the annexation number one Veranda of Community Facilities District 2020-1 has consented to holding the special election on today, April 6th, 2021?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Clerk, do you concur that the special election may be held on April 6th, 2021?
Yes.
All right. I have closed the public hearing already. All right, we will call for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the question of levying special tax within that territory, annexation number one Veranda. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. And.
So you can take a roll call vote at this point?
Okay, roll call vote, please, Ms. Hubert.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papino? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Motion passes four zero. I will now entertain a motion to approve.
So, so at this point, the clerk wants to, the clerk should conduct the election.
See that here, okay?
So I hereby conduct the special election by stating that the official ballot has been opened and that all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot.
Okay, thank you. So now look for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of Galt, the Council, the City of Galt, and apologize, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the City of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Public Service, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the results of a special election in such Community Facilities District on the proposition of the annual levy of special tax within the territory proposed to be annexed to said Community Facilities District to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the Community Facilities District, determining that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said Community Facilities District with full legal effect and ordering the recording of a map of the boundaries of said Community Facilities District, including the territory annexed thereto. Annexation number one Veranda. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Taken.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Now please have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Motion passes four to zero. All right, looking for, now looking for a motion introduced by title only and waive the further reading of the following ordinance. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a Community Facilities District, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number one Veranda into the City of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Public Services to complete the annexation of property to the Community Facilities District. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Motion passes four zero. Mr. Hines, if you'd please allow Councilmember Papino to return. We'll wait for him to rejoin us.
Will do.
Soon as Councilmember Papino rejoins, we will move on to our next item.
Mayor, he's back.
Okay. You know, Kevin, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is going to be the annexation of territory to the Community Facilities District number 2021 Public Services, Annexation Number Two Cordoza One. I will now open the public hearing. And Ms. Hubert has noticed that the public hearing been mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Okay. We can now get the report from city staff with regards to the proposed annexation number two Cordoza One to the Community Facilities District number 2020-1.
Thank you, Mayor. And city council members. Annexation number two is the Cardoza One Project, which is a 16-point acre site subdivided into 69 single-family lots. Cardoza One is located on the north side of Cost Road, west of the railroad tracks and east of Raven Book Drive. The land is owned by KB Home Sacramento Incorporated. And that concludes my pres, oh, also the resolution of intention to annex was heard by the city council on February 16th, 2021. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Do we have any questions by the city council? You have any questions from staff? All right, no hands raised. All right, so do we have any comments or questions from interested persons, including persons owning property within annexation number two Cordoza One of Community Facilities District number 2020-1? Ms. Hubert?
No comments.
Okay. All right, with no comments and no comments by staff or council, there will be no further public testimony allowed from this point. Any further comments from city council? No? Okay. See, Ms. Hubert, if there is any written protests have been received?
No written protests have been received.
Okay. Ms. Hubert, is there any persons registered to vote within annexation number two Cordoza One of Community Facilities District number 2020-1? And if so, the number thereof?
No, the county of Sacramento registrar voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number two Cardoza One of Community Facilities District number 2020-1.
Is the owner of all taxable property and annexation number two Cordoza One of Community Facilities District number 2020-1 has consented to holding the special election on April 6th, 2021?
Yes.
Ms. Hubert, you concur that the special election was held today, April 6th, 2021?
Yes.
All right, I will now close the public hearing. I will be looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to qualified electors of territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the question of levying special taxes within that territory, annexation number two Cordoza One. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved by count, moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papino?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Motion passes five zero. Ms. Clerk, if you can now conduct the special election by stating that the official ballot has been opened, I'm sorry, that's yours.
I hereby conduct the special election by stating that the official ballot has been opened and that all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot.
Thank you. We'll now look for a motion to prove, approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as the legislative, legislative body of the City of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the results of a special election in such Community Facilities District on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within the territory proposed to be annexed to said Community Facilities District to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the Community Facilities District, determining that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said Community Facilities District with the full legal effect and ordering the recording of a map of the boundaries of said Community Facilities District, including the territory annexed thereto. Annexation number two Cordoza One. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by count, moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papino?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. And it passes five zero. All right, now look for a motion introduced by title only and waive further reading of the following ordinance. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a Community Facilities District, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number two Cordoza One into the City of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Public Services to complete the annexation of the property to the Community Facilities District. I need a motion from somebody.
I'm a second.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papino?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Motion passes five zero. We'll now move on to item five, the annexation of territory to Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Public Services Annexation Number Three for Cedar Flats Estate. I will now open the public hearing. Ms. Hubert, was the notice of public hearing mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Thank you. You now have the report from city staff regarding the proposed annexation number three Cedar Flats Estates to the Community Facility District number 2020-1.
Thank you, Mayor Farmer and council members. Cedar Flats Estates is approximately a 31-acre site lying east of Nathaniel Ayers Lane and Amador. The north and west boundary is formed by tributary Dead Man's Gulch. The at the time of the resolution of intention, the final map of the phase one had not yet been recorded. So the annexation map is of the six parcels that make up the original footprint of the subdivision. The phase one final map had been recorded and it's subdivided of part of the 31 acres into 65 lots. Phase two will be coming later, either next year or sooner. The land is owned by TL Partner X One Limited Partnership. That concludes my presentation. I just want to say I appreciate Mayor Farmer tackling the, the, the words all contained in the, in the various resolutions. You're doing a great job.
Thanks. Thank you for the report. All right, do we have any questions by the city council on this item? Okay. I opened the hearing to protest comments and questions from interested persons, including persons owning property within annexation number three Cedar Flats Estates of Community Facilities District number 2020-1.
No protest. No protest.
Okay. All right, we have no protest, no count, no questions from the council. I will end the opportunity for public testimony. And Ms. Hubert, do we have any written protests received?
No written protests have been received.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hubert, are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number three, Cedar Flats Estates, of community facilities district number 2020 dash one? And if so, the number thereof?
No, the county of Sacramento registrar voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number three, Cedar Flats Estates, of community facilities district number 2020 dash one.
Thank you. Ms. Hubert, are the owners of any taxable property in annexation number three, Cedar Flats Estates, of community facilities district number 2020 dash one, have consented to holding the special election on today, April 6th, 2021?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hubert, do you concur that the special election was held on today, April 6th, 2021?
Yes.
All right, I will now close the public hearing. And I will be looking for a motion from council to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the city of Galt, the city of, city council of the city of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of territory proposed to be annexed to the city of Galt, Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one, Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the questions of levying special taxes within that territory, annexation number three, Cedar Flats Estates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
By Councilmember Papano, seconded by Councilmember Lozano, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papano?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Motion passes five zero. Ms. Hubert, if you would now conduct the special election?
I hereby conduct the special election by stating that the official ballot has been opened and that all voters are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot.
Thank you. I will now be looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the city council of Galt, of the city of Galt, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of the city of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one, Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the resolution of a special election in such community facilities district on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within the territory proposed to be annexed to the said community facilities district to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the community facilities district, determining that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said community facilities district with the full legal effect and ordering the recording of a map of the boundaries of said community facilities district, including the territory, and next thereto, annexation number three, Cedar Flats Estates. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Move by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papano?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Item carries five zero. I'll now call for a motion introduced by title only and waive the further reading of the following ordinance, ordinance of the city council, the city of Galt authorizing this levy of special tax in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number three, Cedar Flats Estates, into the city of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one, Public Service, to complete the annexation of the property to the community facilities district. Have a motion, please.
Move.
Move by Vice Mayor Sandu?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papano?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi, motion passes five zero. All right, with the conclusion of that, we will move on to item H, our regular calendar. Thank you, Mr. Forrest, for your presentation.
Thank you.
First item on our regular calendar is going to be from the city manager's office, subject coronavirus COVID-19 update, Mr. Heinz.
Yes, good evening, good evening. City Manager Lorenzo Heinz here, can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Sir. Ready, great, great. So I have a mixed bag of news to share with you today, some good news, some troubling news, so let's get on with it. We'll bring our, these are our normal statistics that we present to council at every council meeting, measured from the prior council meeting on March 16th. So the number of cases of COVID-19 in Sacramento County has increased by 4% or 3,500 cases. The number of deaths in Sacramento County as a result of COVID-19 has increased by 4% or 69 cases. 69 deaths, I'm sorry. The number of cases in Galt have increased by 2% or 40 cases. And since our last council meeting, we have lost three Galt citizens to COVID-19. Sacramento County remains in the red tier. Right now, we've got nine new COVID cases per, per 100,000 population per day. That's actually up from 8% per day, which at our last council meeting. So the number of cases per day is slowly creeping upwards. Based on the news reports that I've been watching, it looks like those case increases are due to the younger segments of the population. We've got a 3.3% positivity rate, and that's actually up, and that's also actually up from 3.2 at our last council meeting. So these statistics are a little troubling in that we're, we're either in the middle of a surge or we're at the beginning of a surge. The greater Sacramento region ICU capacity, which is currently at 27.8%, is versus 28.2% on 316, so our ICU capacity is all, is also ticking downward. So all of these statistics were headed in the right direction, the last, at our last council meeting, however, now they're starting to tick in the wrong direction. Sacramento County continues to vaccinate those folks in phase one A and one B. That's medical personnel, folks who are 65 and older, law enforcement and emergency services, childcare folks, education, food and agriculture, congregate settings with outbreak risks such as incarcerated individuals, and unsheltered. March 15th, the county began vaccinating individuals aged 64, 16 to 64, with high-risk medical conditions. April 1st, the county began vaccinating individuals 50 and older. So as you can see, these changes happen daily. On April 15th, it's projected that individuals in 16 and older will become eligible for vaccination, so that's everybody. So individuals 16 and older become eligible for vaccinations. We've also got some efforts here in Galt as well, thanks to the, the good work of Parks and Recreation Director Armando Solis and his team. We have a drive-through vaccination event that will be held at the Galt Market Grounds on the, during the week of April 18th. We have 1,000 vaccines have been allocated for the event, and final details and appointments will be released soon. We're also coordinating with CSD, Consumer Services District, coordinating with them for a mobile vaccination effort also during the week of April 18th, specifically focused on unsheltered community members and seniors. And so we're, we're really happy about these efforts in that we're trying to get these vaccines pointed at folks in our community who really need the help. Vaccinate Sacramento, which is the webpage for Sacramento County, contains the most up-to-date vaccination information, and also staff continues to push the information out via social media and the city website with available vaccination appointments. The state, the state of California updated its guidance on April 2nd, last Friday, and so we've had updates to regarding gatherings, receptions, conferences, indoor live events, and performances, and all of this takes place as of April 15th. Gatherings outdoors, social and information gatherings, we are in the red tier, so no more than 25 people, as for outdoors. Indoor gatherings are still strongly discouraged in all tiers, but are allowed with modifications and capacity limits in the red, orange, and yellow tiers. As also part of the state's updated guidance, capacity limits for private, private events such as receptions or conferences have also been laid out by the state. For us, the outdoor capacity is 50 people, and outdoor with vaccination or testing is bumped up to 100, 200 people. Indoor with vaccination or testing is 100 people. In all tiers, modifications are required to reduce risk, including pre-purchased tickets or defined guest list and assigned seating. And so we did ask the county about possibly holding council meetings under this, this particular area. The, the statement from the county is, I quote, "The major changes in that guidance occur on April 15th. To conduct a city council meeting with public, with the public under this guidance, I believe you would either need to conduct the meetings outdoors or require defined guest list, assigned seating, or testing, or proof of vaccination for all attendees, which you might not be able to do." Given this, given this announcement today, the county expects to have some guidance in the future regarding coordinating with the state, but I wanted to let you all know, it's still complicated, and we'll talk more about reopening and the next item. Today, Governor Newsom announced that the state had reached a 20 million vaccine plateau, which we're very happy about, and the state aims to fully reopen. This is good news. Fully reopen on June 15th, as long as two criterion are met, that our vaccine supply is sufficient for Californians 16 years and older who wish to be inoculated, and hospitalization rates are stable and low. And so we'll be keeping an eye on that ICU capacity and this surge that we're in right now, to make sure that those numbers eventually plateau and start to head downwards, because that will dictate how quickly the governor will reopen the state. But right now, they're shooting for June 15th. The state will, the state will continue to require masking and encourage all Californians to get vaccinated. And that's the update, update for April 6th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Does any of the council have any questions on this particular item?
I. Yes. I have no questions, I just want to point something out, I want to thank Mr. Heinz and staff for being diligent and, and really pressing forward on this issue with our seniors. And, you know, we've heard, at least I have, and I'm sure some of my colleagues have heard from the senior community, that there was a desire to do, to do some kind of mobile testing. And as we have heard from Mr. Heinz over the last several months, really, the county is the one who, who controls that. And so with the diligence that our staff has put together, we are absolutely going to meet the needs of our seniors as best we can with, with a cooperative effort between the Consumer CSD and, and well, as well as the county, to get some mobile vaccinations going for our folks. And again, if, even if it's only one person that we vaccinate in that community, I think it's worth it. And so I want to publicly thank our staff, and certainly Mr. Heinz and his leadership to make this happen. So not, not a, not an easy thing to do, but certainly a need in our community, both with the unhomed folks, but certainly our seniors. So thank you very much. I have no questions. I find it frustrating still, because it, some of it doesn't make sense to me in terms of restrictions, but, but thank you for, for working within that, those restrictions, and working within this system that has been built for us to get our community vaccinated that, that wanted.
Thank you, council member. Does anybody else have a comment on this subject? All right, if not, I will, I have a question. So how are we going to, are we working with, how are we determining who is in need of the mobile? I, I do, like, it's like, as Councilmember Lozano said, I, I'm very happy to hear about the effort to do that, because I know that was something that was being asked about, but I just question about how are we reaching out to those people and know if they're in need of that mobile? Do we know?
Well, we, we had a conversation with some folks last week, and we were able to get some really specific information through some of the groups that work with the seniors here in Galt, including the members of the Commission on Aging, members on Meals, members from Meals on Wheels, and we were able, we're able to get some real specific information. Director Solis, any, 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 any additions here?
Yeah, I spoke to Bob Alley, the Chair of the Commission on Aging today. We identified nine properties that we believe house our seniors. Between him and his commissioners, they will be visiting these nine sites, trying to get the names and addresses of these people and phone numbers, so that we can register them and have them ready the day we choose for the vaccine to be at that location.
Okay. Thank you. In reference to, I have a question, in reference to the report you gave about the ICU capacity, that when they give you that information, they don't really specify to you, like, when they say 28 or 27% capacity, they don't really give you any additional information beyond that point about the capacity, what that entails, that just that that's how much capacity is, is that right, Mr. Heinz?
To my knowledge, that's all, that's all the information we get, although Economic Development Manager Mendez is on the line, and maybe she can comment further.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask Amy is because I have a friend who's a nurse at Kaiser South, and I speak with her daily, and she says that the ICU, they do have quite a bit ICU capacity there, but they have no COVID cases in ICU they haven't had for over, over a week and a half now. It's basically a lot of other stuff that has gone untested, they have, you know, spikes in diabetes issues and cancer and a bunch of stuff that's basically a side effects of people not going to the hospital. So when I see that number, I, I, you know, people automatically draw their mind to that that has to do with COVID, but that's not necessarily the case.
No, the number that we pull is from the state, and it's just a general ICU capacity number for the greater Sacramento area, so it's not necessarily just Sacramento County, it actually encompasses a bigger area. So that update comes directly from the state, they update it every Tuesday, and there's no specifics as it relates to COVID. So there has been information sort of out there, news-wise, to that point where there's been a lot of lag in folks visiting hospitals and going to doctor's appointments, and so there's, they are seeing a large spike in other types of health issues, so that would make sense, but no, there's no detail that comes from the state when it comes to that ICU number.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't think so. So thank you for that. And then the last thing is kind of with what Rich was saying, where it's a little frustrating trying to make heads or tails. I was reading through the latest online, the latest health report, and it's strange, it talks about private, so indoor seated for live events and performances, so it's referring to live events and performances that are indoor, and it says, as of effective April 15th, that venues that have up to 1,500-person capacity can have maximum 10 or 100 people. And it says they can even have 25% if the gas, if the guests are shown proof of vaccination. So I'm confused why they would say that an indoor performance or a live event would allow up to 100 people, or 10%. So it says zero, but then they're telling you that they don't think it's recommended that you have any members of the public come into, I, I just confuse, it's just contradictory to me, I don't know. Mr. Heinz?
I, I, you know, we're just doing the best we can, and to interpret these rules, and to try to stay within the county's guidelines and the state's guidelines, because we don't want to get caught stepping out of the lines here. And every day, it's a change, I can guarantee you, this time tomorrow, Armando, Amy, and Craig and I will be chatting about yet another change that has come down the pike, or another twist in the requirements that we have to live under. And this is kind of the way it's been for the last year. When the governor made that announcement today, I can tell you, I personally breathed a slight sigh of relief, that perhaps we can just get back to normal. That perhaps we can just get back to normal and just have to worry about the business of running the city as opposed to the business of trying to. Stay within all of these guidelines. That change, that change sometimes twice a day.
It's just really miss, I mean, it's like I'm looking at one and saying private gatherings. And then it goes, I, I mean, it's just like, it's contradictory the way they, they worded out, and I just don't, no wonder.
We actually, Mayor Farmer reached out to the county directly because we have the same question. Armando and I spoke earlier today and. Public meetings, they don't really fall under any of the categories. And so we reached out to the county to find out where we would fall and. The way that they described it was basically, we would fall under the um, not private gatherings, but more of like the social receptions conferences. And so, if we wanted to make people provide proof of testing or proof of vaccines. Um, there was this whole sort of process that they laid out. And, I mean, it would be a nightmare for us. So what they recommended was, hey, if you do it outdoors, maybe that's the way to get around it, but indoors, it's really difficult. So. Um, we did reach out, we tried to get some guidance, and that was kind of what we got back from the county today. Because the state released it, and there's really, you know, the city doesn't really fall under either of those categories. We're not hosting a conference. Um, we're also, it's not a private gathering. So, where do we fall? And that was the response we got. So. We wanted, you know, make folks show um, that they've vaccinated, or that they have proof of tests. Or we have a, you know, a list of folks who are going to show up for the council meeting. It gets really complicated and convoluted is sort of what we determined at the end of it.
And in addition to that, we, we also have some logistics that we'll be presenting to you in the next staff report. Um, regarding, you know, council meetings and how we're gonna do that. And so, and the rules have changed slightly since we prepped this, since we prepped that staff report. So, it's, it's, it's an ever-evolving issue. Um, the only thing I am. Really looking forward to is when the state and county give us firm guidelines on governmental meetings.
Yeah, they need, they need to do something, because to say indoor seated events can have up to twenty-five.
It does, it does not affect us. It, it affects the conferences, it affects the live concerts. It's, it's, it's. As usual, government is at the bottom of the priority, or at least the local governments are at the bottom of the priority and. And I'm sorry to be.
No, I, I know you don't take these roles, I get it. I just, it just sounds like it just. Typical, typical big government, you know, like, it's okay to go to a concert and do this and that, you know, so we can keep the economy flowing, but people can't exercise their. You know, their democratic right to uh, come to a meeting. So, I get it. Alright, um, so. Uh, if there's no additional questions on this item, I will go ahead and move on. Does anybody else have any comments?
And, and just noting, there's no public comment.
I'm sorry, thank you for.
Thank you, Tina.
Rose, do we have any uh, hands raised online?
There are currently no hands raised online.
Okay, thank you, thank you Tina for bringing that up. Alright, so we'll move on to item two, which will be the reopening of City of Galt offices, facilities, Mr. Heinz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so we've got a staff report before council. Laying out all the implications of reopening and some of the things that we're going to have to uh, uh, manage while we're in that process. Um, again, as I, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the governor's press conference today, he's shooting for June fifteenth. As the reopening, I believe we have a council meeting that night. So that, um, so, uh, hopefully that'll, that'll be good news. So I wanted to first of all, review the uh, the emergency timeline, uh, that on March fourth. Uh, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of COVID nineteen. On March seventeenth, the city council authorized the city manager as the Director of Emergency Services. To promulgate orders and regulations necessary for the protection of life and property, uh, according to California law. Uh, the city manager, uh, complied with federal, state, and county requirements and closed city facilities. Uh, but this also allowed departments to continue their critical city operations and services without disruption. Um, as the state continues to recover from COVID nineteen, most counties have been moved into. The late, the, the state's less restrictive color tiers, i.e. red, orange, and yellow. Uh, recently Sacramento County has moved to the red tier, and the council expressed a desire to discuss reopening. Now, I, I have, I, I don't know what the governor's press conferences does for the tier system. But what I had heard from some county officials is that they are keeping their fingers crossed that the surge that you saw. The slight surge that you saw in the last presentation will somewhat subside or peak during the month of April. And there's, there is hope that we can move to the orange tier, if the orange tier still exists, um, by the end of April. So there's, there's hope. Um, so, let's uh, review, let's review a little bit about COVID nineteen and its impact on. Uh, Galt city staff. So we've had forty, fifty-seven cases of federal and or state leaves of absences. Paid to employees due to COVID-related illnesses, quarantine periods, or school slash daycare closures. Uh, this equates to about thirty-seven percent of the city's regular full-time and part-time workforce. That at some point was affected by COVID, uh, that resorted, that resulted in lost uh, work time. The city also pays unemployment insurance, um, to twenty-two former part-time slash temporary employees who resigned. Due to COVID nineteen concerns, or failed to return from layoff or reduction of hours in twenty twenty. Much of the employment cost, however, can be covered by COVID nineteen specific funding. Um, however, the city will be ineligible set for such funding if we don't remain in compliance. So. You can see that we are, as a city, sort of boxed in. And so, and the big hammer that is over us is. Any, any instances or episodes of non-compliance, uh, could result in um, funding ineligibility. Since last March, the city has recorded nine work-related COVID nineteen incidents. So in addition to the, uh, the, the, the State Department of Public Health, uh, the County Department of Public Health. We now have Cal-OSHA keeping an eye on things as well. And so there are new Cal-OSHA regulars, regulations that have been placed. Uh, have placed an additional burden on managing our staffing levels due to strict, strict quarantine reta- requirements. As a result, uh, the city manager, I directed all staff to limit in-person meetings to no more than fifteen minutes. As a means to reduce our close contact exposures. Once city facilities reopen to the public, if a particular department location experiences too many COVID cases. Uh, mandated quarantines or an outbreak, uh, we may need to close again to the public for a period of time due to low staffing levels. Uh, because we'll have to put some folks out on quarantine and to ensure compliance with uh, COVID, uh, Cal-OSHA. Non-compliance with the regulations, as I've sort of, if I'd mentioned earlier, there are implications with the, the state and county and federal level. But now we've got um, Cal-OSHA, um, they have been diligent in their efforts to ensure that. California's workplaces uh, remain within the guidelines. And apparently they have levied penalties up to a hundred and forty thousand per violation. Um, we did check, there's one case where they, where they fined an organization almost four hundred thousand dollars. Um, because of issues uh, related to COVID. Uh, the city is scheduled to receive funding of four point nine nine five million from the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, we will be having a study session about those dollars sometime in May, as soon as the staff and I get. Clarification on the requirements of using those dollars outside of backfilling COVID nineteen losses. Um, and so we have to be careful with our adherence to guidelines, because we don't want to run the risk of uh, losing those dollars as well. So the return to onsite council meetings. So as of um, yesterday. Um, we um, came, we talked to the county about the requirements of holding onsite council meetings. And so, social distancing requirements would require um, the four council members at the dais. And one council member at the staff table. The reason is, is the reason we only have four council members at the dais is that the clerk, Ms. Hubert. Will have to occupy one of those seats so she can manage the controls for the city, uh, for the meeting. The public cannot yet be admitted to the council meetings, although we got some information today that sort of conflicts with that. Um, in, in a small way, um, but so, no, public cannot be, uh, well, cannot yet be admitted to council meetings. Uh, which makes holding the in-person meetings more difficult. And even under these new rules where. You know, we can have gatherings, but everybody's got to show proof of vaccination. Um, or, you know, uh, just basically make sure that they're healthy and have been vaccinated. It can complicate things quite a bit. Um, pursuant to state and county requirements, face mask or face coverings will be required during the entire council meeting. So we will all be masked up at this meeting. And city staff, uh, we're still developing um, a way for the public. Uh, to provide input for li- uh, for live meetings. Um, I, I wanted to. I wanted to use something a little more sophisticated than sticking a polycom, uh, a teleconferencing uh, device right in the middle of the room. And um, and, and that's not the, that's not the optimal way. Uh, for us to get public input. And so we're still working on trying to do that. Um, so the other thing that we looked at is, well, maybe we can utilize an alternate location. And so the city was advised by Metro Cable that is not, right now, it's not providing uh, field productions. Um, a, a non-control room shoot. So, uh, we are limited to the location here, and this is why. Even in here in the Zoom meetings, there is a gentleman from SAC Metro Cable sitting in the control room, right in the next room behind me. And still coordinating things with our city clerk and our admin as well. Now, on the topic of reopening city facilities to the public, Public Works has, has completed installation of. All shield barriers at various city offices and facilities to help ensure uh, the safety of the public and city staff. Um, we still have to get special signage to be, uh, will need to be placed as appropriate. In front of city offices to advise the public of social distancing and other necessary relative precautions. Um, reopening will also require additional measures such as providing additional sanitation. Uh, disinfection efforts in areas where the public is allowed access, or other spaces that haven't been utilized during the whole COVID closure. Uh, Public Works it needs, anticipates the need to hire additional temporary staff. For cleaning purposes or procure an outside vendor, uh, to meet the supplemental sanitation efforts, um, that we're anticipating. So some of the considerations that we have for reopening is, one of the things we're looking at is establishing an appointment system for vendors. Um, if folks visit City Hall or any of our facilities, there will be a pre-screening. Um, we will ask questions, we will do a temperature check of all visitors. Um, we can also uh, offer the instance of conducting the transaction or meeting outside if conditions allow. And that's all I have to provide regarding the reopening, other than the, the details are listed in the staff report. And um, Mayor, that, that concludes my report, and the staff and I are open to questions. Um, as you can see, there's a long list of authors, um, on that staff report, and we're all here, uh, to answer your questions. Uh, but let me, let me just conclude. Uh, I know we're gonna have a discussion, but as your city manager. I would recommend that we come back sometime in May, probably the first meeting in May. And we be allowed to give you an update, because there are a lot of things in play right now. And um, my biggest fear is stepping out of line with one of these other entities. So, um, again, we'll be happy to come back at the first week of May, if the council desires with a, with an update. And hopefully we'll have better news for you at that time. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Do you have any public comment on this issue? Miss Hubert?
No written comment.
Rose, do we have any hands raised?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, I'm gonna go around to the council first, um, see if anybody has any comment. Vice Mayor, are you there, or we can move past if he's not?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you have any comments on this issue?
Uh, yes, so first of all, Mr. Heinz and your, all your staff, uh, thank you for the odd detail report. I know we're going through with almost a, more than a year. And I believe in the reason we asking for last meeting, and now we are on a red tier. And I know all, all the report, whatever, you know, all the explain, it was before, I think, couple of weeks. Like in, we was, there, there is a couple of question I have on the report. Uh, one thing. Is fifty-seven cases that was in City of Galt, or that's, they said federal and, can you?
Oh, that fifty-seven cases was in our city.
Okay, and then mentioned something federal, so we have some federal employee working?
Yes, we are scheduled to receive dollars from President Biden's um, uh, latest funding plan. Um, our particular share is around, is almost five million dollars. All of the cities um, in California have been allocated a certain amount, and I'm sure all the cities nationwide have been allocated a certain amount. But our share is five million. It's my understanding that those dollars are to be used to backfill COVID-related losses. And the last that I've heard as far as the other requirements is that if there's any leftover, it's to be pointed toward infrastructure. And, but that's the only details I have. I have staff, um, going to seminars, trying to get specifics. But so far, we have not got any specifics out of uh, the, uh, the grand tours. And this is why I wanted to wait until May to hold a study session. And, because perhaps we'll actually have some concrete requirements to share with the council.
Thank you. And the other thing on that report, you said there is one business, it was, uh, what? Three hundred ninety-six thousand dollar was fine, right? This was a private entity, or that's a government entity?
Uh, Stephanie, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I think that one was actually a government entity, and you can go on, um. The uh, Department of Industrial Relations website, and they actually have. A section now where they're just listing COVID or OSHA violations related to COVID.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then my next question is, you know. If we decide to open the city council meeting, and you said we can only four council member can be on a dicey, and one should be. On, not on the dicey?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, but it's up to the council what they decide, but I will be voluntary to sit down. I don't have that problem. And then my other question is, uh, you said one, the city clerk have to have on the dicey, what was the reason?
I'll let the city clerk explain that.
Oh.
Uh, the Creston machine that runs the videos and the public comment, we've tried to see if it can. Um, come off the dais and maybe even run an extension cord or something. The wiring will not allow that. So to run the Creston machine and the public comment, that type of thing, that's where it stays.
So there's no possibility we can bring that down, that machine with the.
Uh, they've tried, it would, I mean, if you want to get into, they said you'd have to drill a hole into the dais, because the cords go down. It's, you know, there's a wall right there. Claire, do you know how much more board would be required?
Yeah, the, the drilling a hole in that, um, in that wall, um, makes it, um. That wall is specifically made for the protection of council if there were ever an incident with any kind of gunfire. It invalidates that and takes away any warranty on that material. So it's probably ill-advised to drill a hole in that. Running wires, um, is, is not really an option. In that, it's not just one wire, it's, it's a complicated system that's connected to every device on that dais. So. It, it makes it a little more complicated to move the clerk down. Um, whereas for a council member, it's moving a microphone. If that makes sense.
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. Dyson for clarification. Uh, the other thing is, is, is the public, uh, Mr. Heinz, they cannot. Come, right? They, they cannot.
According to the, according to the county, when we, when we drafted this report, no public. Now, um, now we, we talk with the county today and trying to shoehorn ourselves. Into one of these categories, which really isn't intended for a government gathering. Um, but essentially, we'd have to, you'd have to show proof of vaccination. and register in order to attend. So basically, I'll have a member of the Galt PD waiting at the door, looking for, waiting to see your vaccination card. And, and checking a list to see if you're pre-registered. And frankly, gentlemen, uh, I think we're better off the way we are right now.
So if I can, the Brown Act prohibits, currently prohibits you from requiring registration in order to come to a council meeting. Um, so, so we would have to, if you want to move forward to try to mesh those, we would have to try to figure out um, how the prohibition in the Brown Act for asking someone to register or sign in or do anything like that would mesh with the requirements of having pre-registration and requiring people to show that they were vaccinated or had had a test or something like that.
Right. Hence, hence my last statement that there is, this is convoluted and um at, at this point right now.
No, what we totally understand, like in today's news, some of the conferences totally, you know, dictated. He's, he's saying is a different way, whatever the already in, in, in the government. And, and the other thing, my, my thing is, we wanna make, the, the thing is, we want, we like to push, you know, some kind of date. So some kind of date in the future is not like fifteen maybe in future, but we like to wanna make sure we come a commitment. So we can open as soon as possible with all the requirement.
Right. And so, and that's why, and I, I just wanted to say, that's why I was, I was really happy um, that he came out with June fifteenth. Um, because I'm thinking if they're, if they really intend on doing it on June fifteenth. Um, and uh, Clerk Hubert, if you correct me, I, I believe we have a meeting that night. So if he intends on doing this by June fifteenth, it is my hope between now and then that the state will give us requirements, strict guidelines on what we can and can't do. And the county will concur with those guidelines. So I can ask my staff to do, take certain steps and I don't have to worry about losing funding or uh running afoul of any of these organizations. So if there's a date out there that I'm keeping my fingers crossed for, it's June fifteenth.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say one more thing. These rules change every day. And so if things get better, faster, we will let you know for sure.
Thank you. And my next question is about the opening the offices. That's why I got, you know, the council have a concern. And I look at the report, the way public work, where, you know, Mr. Selling did the jobs, you know, all these uh, he already installed the, all the protectives. Uh, the only thing I, I, you know, I'm probably it's up to the other council, but that's my little bit concerned. Instead of, you know, when the people wanna come to, to pay their bill. The people wanna go to the police department, just wanna inquire where their police, uh, where their police report. Or they wanna go to the planning department, just wanna see, just wanna ask how they can get huge permit or whatever. They don't have to, uh, you know, do the appointment. And I don't think that we can have it that big line, you know? But if somebody wanted, because you know, when they're making the appointment, there is a different question, who you are, what's your name, what, the region. A lot of citizen, I, you know, talk to them, they don't like, they just wanna walk and they wanna, just wanna talk only first window. And you, we know that the, if the public came in, they're gonna go on to just first window with the protective thing. And they're gonna go back and we're gonna use all the requirements, see if they're possible. So we can, oh, we can wave, uh, you know, we are not using the appointment. That's kind of my opinion, but I'm gonna go with the, all the council member or with you what we decide to do.
Yeah. Well, you know, we're, we're gonna make every effort to um, to make it as convenient for folks as we can. Um, but again, again, I've got to make sure that we stay within these rules. Um, as you saw in that last staff report, or earlier in this staff report back in March twenty twenty, um, the council directed the city manager, the then city manager, uh, to take certain actions. That responsibility fell to me um as of August thirty-first at eight AM. Um, and um, so I'm, I'm gonna do whatever I can to balance the needs of the public and the safety of the staff and staying within the parameters of these, these entities that are overseeing us right now. And so I think Public Works has done a good job of getting the barriers up. We have some other things to consider as is, as if, all right, are who are, you know, who's going to take the temperature checks of folks as they come in, um, and ask these questions. And so, and how are folks going to feel about having a temperature check and these questions asked of them? And um, and so that's why I'm thinking, maybe we should just wait till we open. And that way, we're not, we don't have the burden of doing these things. Um, so there, it's a complicated topic and I'm glad we're discussing it tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Heinz? It, is, is it currently, is it, correct me if I'm wrong, is it currently possible to walk into the market office and conduct business with the people that work the market from the other side of the Plexiglas?
I'll let Director Solis respond to that.
Yes, we have uh that Plexiglas on both the outside and inside of the market office.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, but we allow the public to walk into the market property and deal with our staff with protocols in place, Plexiglas, and they're, I'm assuming they're required to wear a mask when they come in. But we're, and, and, and these are probably vendors and things, probably people not even from our community for that matter. Um, but we are not able to do the exact same thing for, let's say, the finance office for someone to walk in and pay their utility bill, the same matter. I, I don't understand it. Can you address that?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let uh Director Solis and Director Selling and Director Tyson explain the differences between the Galt Market and the Finance Office.
Please, one of you go ahead.
I can tell you what we do at the market if that's a, the question that you're looking for, the answer you're looking for.
Are, are, are folks actually coming into the office, Armando?
Well, our, our office is completely blocked off from our, our staff uh with uh barriers in between them. Um, I don't know exactly, I haven't been in finance for a while, so I don't know exactly how they're set up at this point. Uh, they're socially distanced. Um, but we try and use everybody. Our cashiers cannot be within six feet of each other, so I have to position them. We're ones at the indoor and ones at the outdoor. We primarily try and use the people in the outdoor window. And then if the line gets big, we bring them inside to try and get that open, to get it done quicker.
Okay.
Well, I think one of the ways I would describe?
I'm, I'm sorry. And one of the reasons that we do do that is that part, part of the CDC protocols are that uh, you know, if you're within six feet of somebody for more than fifteen minutes in a twenty-four hour period and one person gets uh, you know, has been can, um, possibly has COVID. The other person would have to, to go out also and quarantine. So that's one of the reasons why we have them so far apart.
I thought the new guidance was three feet, not six.
That is a recommendation for school, I believe.
It, it's actually the Cal OSHA Emergency Temporary Standard. So we have to go by the Cal OSHA rules and not necessarily what CDC comes out with.
The, the other distinction I think is that um, city office, the, so for FEMA, for, for claims with FEMA, the way we're describing this, it's that the Galt Market is an essential service to like a grocery store. And so it is not um, a normal government office, a normal government function. And so we follow the guidelines for the county having to do with government offices with the rest of the city. But we've kind of earmarked off the market as specifically designed like a grocery store oper- operation to do an open-air service for our community for groceries and essential services.
So essentially, we're, we're, we're treating the Galt Market like we would to Save Mart across the street.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
No, so what, so from a Public Works perspective, is not, is not utilities, is not utilities and water infrastructure. I mean, why are these not considered essential services? I'm really struggling with the thing. Let, let me actually back up. What I'm struggling with here, and I get, I understand, and this is not directed towards anybody personally, but my struggle here is that I feel like we're treating certain workers within the city a lot more like, whoa, we can't have those, it's not safe for those people to interact. But, but these people over here, you know, sorry, but you know, you're just gonna have to keep doing your job and deal with the public. I don't, I don't like that. I don't like telling the Parks and Rec worker that, hey, you have to deal with somebody coming up and being just in the other side of Plexi. But we can't have somebody come into, and not to pick on you, Mike, but we can't have somebody to come into Public Works because, you know, you know, for fear of that. You know, we can't risk that staff member. This, this is, this is a wrong message we're sending here. I mean, I, I don't think it's fair. And I've had an employee come up to me that works for Parks and Rec that watched the last meeting that came to me and said, they personally were offended by the comments that are made that they're like, am I not important? Is my life not important than the other people that are City Hall because they're, you know? I don't know. I, I'm just, I'm really frustrated with this, to be honest with you. I feel like I don't understand the problem. I, I think we have, we put Plexi in place, we have the proper signage up, we have masks up. I don't see a problem with somebody walking in to a Plexiglas screen and paying a utility bill, one person at a time. Same thing with Public Works or the Parks and Rec Office. I mean, especially with utilities and finance. I, I, I find a real problem with. I have a senior that said to me yesterday, he said, you know, he's one of the people that likes to pay cash, and so he's been frustrated with this. He said, so what, what the city is telling me is that they wanna put me at more risk because I have to go to the grocery store, I have to walk in my bank with a bunch of other people and buy a money order and spend those dollars. And I'm around those more people, that's less safe for me than if I walk into City Hall and interact with just that person and pay my utility bill and I go back home. What do I say to that person? What do you want to say to the person if you were their elected official?
We're aware of that um particular individual and we are working on an alternate process to enable that person to pay cash. It, it requires uh additional staff to be brought back from unemployment and a couple of safeguards to be done just to ensure that we're um, uh, keeping, you know, cash is kind of a, a special beast. And uh, we've had our auditors look at the alternate process, give us feedback. And we're, we're aware of that particular individual. We, we don't have, um, we've gotten a lot of comments from customers who are very pleased with the efficiency of the new systems. That doesn't suit everyone. And so we are trying to accommodate those few that are struggling, still struggling with this.
Councilor Vandenberg, you have a comment?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have just one question from uh, uh, Mr. Heinz. Mr. Heinz, did you find out our neighboring city, El Grove, their city office is open for the public?
I have not done that research. Any of the staff, are you aware of it?
They are, they are, spoke to them today. I spoke to the city clerk in the city of El Grove. They actually never closed City Hall. Lodi is still closed, but Lodi is in the red, in the uh purple tier. But El Grove has had City Hall open with a one entering one, like I just described. They've been open the whole time. They actually never closed. So I was trying to speak to the city manager, but I was able to speak to the clerk and she
Okay.
Leaved some information today, so.
I'll, I'll be speaking to the city manager sometime this week and I'll, and I'll chat with him about uh some of the specifics that they, they put in place.
Jade, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was curious, but what are people doing if they have to get new service for electricity, you know, city bill, garbage?
So the service currently um provides, the city's website provides information um to be able to set up that service. There's also a phone number people call, so um, we've been able to instruct people on um through the process very easily. Um, we've also streamlined our business license process to enable um folks to be able to sign up for a business license um, online um or through phone. Um, we, we've actually made significant improvements to the variety of types of payments you can make. So you can make, you can mail in your check to a lock, through a lockbox process. You can electronically pay in a couple of different ways. You can make a phone call and go through a third party and make a payment. Um, and you can drop things off in the, in the Dropbox uh checks. Um, we, we don't accept cash in the Dropbox um currently. Um, but um, there are some agencies that don't accept cash, whether it's COVID-related um, situation or not, but we still do accept cash and we will come up with an alternate process for that. But um, most of our customers are very happy with those improvements, kind of makes life easier for them.
Same with permits?
Yeah, I mean, Craig may wanna speak to that too, uh, council member, but as far as permits and whatnot, yeah, people can contact uh us to kind of schedule a time. Uh, we've had meetings outside. Uh, we've got a little um, area outside of the picnic bench and stuff where we've had meetings, weather permitting, of course. Um, or we've made other arrangements uh to uh, to meet with them. So um, yeah, I, I haven't heard any complaints on the public work side. I don't know if Mr. Hoffman wants to, you know, speak to that as far as the permits in his uh department.
That's okay.
Looks like Mr. Hoffman is, is quiet, so if um, um, I, 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 you know, I, I um, so I was just uh hoping Mr. Hoffman would jump on board. He may be on a call and um, so.
I mean, I can speak to it a little bit. He's basically done the same thing. I know he's met with people outside. They've, they've called and, and I've seen people come in. Uh, you know, that have made a pre-arrangement kind of thing. Uh, so they've uh, that's how they've dealt with it as well.
Okay, great, great.
Does that conclude your, your questions at this time?
Just in general, I know you guys are trying to follow the rules, but I don't understand how I can go to the bank under basically the same scenario, walk up to the teller, deposit my cash, but I can't do it to the city. I did it three days ago. It just seems unreasonable.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if the city manager minds. My understanding, at least when that decision was made, um, was really, I think, twofold. Because back then, at least, you know, things were a lot more uncertain. Uh, and so there was a lot of extra precaution taken. I think the, the size of the city and uh the former city manager, at least, and not that things have changed really. We don't have a lot of redundancy here as far as staff goes. So we were really taking the position to try to, you know, maintain services and minimize the potential. Um, you know, for um, just loss of staff, you know, being out sick, sick kind of thing. And, and then impacting service levels. And I think the other thing is, is kind of some of these things like banks or whatnot may have been determined to be essential services uh, kind of thing, like you've kind of heard before with the market. So um, so I think it's, I think it's really kind of a twofold thing is some city offices in different cities. As you, as I think the mayor pointed out, you know, Elk Grove has never closed. I think they've significantly limited their services, but they, they technically, yes, did not close, is my understanding as well. Um, so I think, you know, they're obviously a bigger city. They probably have more staff redundancy, certainly than, than Galt does. Um, but it, it's kind of a, you know, different interpretations, I guess, and, and different comfort levels, different, you know, levels of concern kind of thing would be my take on it, so.
And I appreciate your comments, Mike, um.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Director Hoffman um will be available, is available right now to speak to his processes.
Go ahead, Craig.
Oh, sorry. You know, we have met outside. We try to be as accommodating as we, we can um, to folks. I, I don't think we've had as hard of a, a time. If somebody wants to meet face to face, we meet outside, we wear our masks. But I have had concerns, community development might be small. There's six of us, but there's six of us within thirty feet of each other. And we try to do the best job we can to make sure we're providing a service to the community. But if one of us got sick, we'd wipe out the entire department. So that's something that I'm concerned about. My goal is to make sure we're providing service to this entire community and we try to be as accommodating as we possibly can.
I appreciate that, Craig. But going back to my point again. You guys are all working amongst each other, so if there's gonna be risk of contagion, obviously it's more likely gonna be from a fellow staff member. Uh, to, you know, if masks work and Plexiglas works and all these things that we're required to be doing, if they all work. And you're, and you know, and somebody in finance is wearing a mask and then there's a piece of Plexiglas and the person that's coming in is wearing a mask. And, and they, I, I just, I'm struggling to just understand, but yet I can go to Taco Bell and I can go to the drive-through and, and that young, poor girl or whoever is working at the drive-through. You know, I guess her life is just not as important as the city of Galt. Cause I can tell you, I don't think there's a, there is one business in this entire town that's not open right now to some capacity except City Hall. And I would, I would, I would challenge any of you to prove me otherwise. So. I just want to say, I get, I, excuse me, let me finish talking.
Understood.
I, I understand the council meeting and I, and I totally agree with the council meeting in person. I think that the logistics of that. Are gonna just be, I think it's gonna be too cumbersome to try to figure out the logistics. We can't have people in just yet or we're not really sure and there's. Questions, and I think what I would like to see on that front. Is let's continue to see how that's gonna happen so that we can be ready to pull a trigger on that. As soon as we're given the green light, we don't have to say, okay, we've been given the okay, now it's gonna take thirty days to implement. I would like to have a protocol or plan in place for that, so that the minute we are okay to do that, we can go right to live meetings, so that would like. That's, that would be my request. I'd like, you know, other council can pipe in. But as far as opening City Hall, I just really struggling with this. I, I just really feel like it's not a big deal to just have. The ability to, somebody calls a number on the door and do like Craig's doing. Somebody can step out if they need to and do a transaction with. Lodi actually is taking cash. I know it sounds bizarre. They said they take cash in their Dropbox. I don't know how they do that. See, I might want to talk to them, but they told me that today. So.
I, I'd love to see their, I'd love to see the findings in their CAFR.
Well, I'm just, you know, I mean, unless we're gonna start discounting somebody's bill, the cost of a money order, I don't think it's fair that we have to require that they get one. I'm just, just saying. I mean, it's legal tender. If somebody wants to pay with cash, they should be able to have to do that, and otherwise, we should refund them the cost of their money order. I mean, because you know what? Some people, six or seven dollars or whatever, that's a meal for them, especially when they're living on six hundred dollars a month or seven hundred on fixed income. So I, I would like to hear from the other council. Mr. Lozano, you've had your hand up. Go ahead.
Actually, I think, uh, Mr. Heinz had something to say, just.
All I, all I wanted to say is, uh, Mayor, I understand your frustration. Um, we didn't come up with these classifications. Uh, they were put upon us. Um, and yes, this bifurcates the city in a certain respect. With the Galt market being considered one category and the rest of the operations considering another. Again, I understand your frustration, but unfortunately, this is the world we live in. I can tell you that per your direction just a minute ago, we will be ready to conduct in-person council meetings. And based on the conversation in this council meeting, we will start to look at reopening and how we can do that. And so we hear you, and so we'll, we'll start that process. Um, redundancy is an issue. Uh, Elk Grove is a far bigger city than we are, and maybe I'm overstating there. I mean, we're a hundred and fifty-five strong and I know Elk Grove is bigger. Um, but what Director Hoffman says is true. If someone comes down with it in that group, that whole group's gone for ten days and we don't do any permits for ten days. If, coming out of that department. So, um, that's the concern. Um, our finance department. Uh, we've got a couple of folks in, uh, utility billing, and if they go down. That function goes away for ten days. Um, so we're not, uh, and I get, I get your frustration. I get it. Um, but we will, we will start to move toward how we can reopen City Hall. Protect ourselves, knowing we don't have a whole lot of redundancies. Um, but I wanted to let you know that we'll, we'll do that.
Councilman Lozano, you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Heinz. Um, I'm gonna switch gears here a little bit, cause I have some other. Uh, not, not even questions, but maybe some, uh, they're questions, but not questions about what was written. Um, a, as we move forward and talk about the four point nine million, uh, that we can spend, I know there's some. It's, it's a little vague on what can, it can be spent on, uh, at this point. Uh, but, but a couple of questions I would ask that staff look into as you begin to explore that or. More information becomes available is, what are the restrictions on the spending, first of all? And then secondly, is this money that we're getting or are we getting authorized spending? So. Um, you know, I know the federal government's a little weird in terms of wanting to just hand you over money. Uh, a lot of times they, they hand you money that's authorized and it never really hits your bank account until you. Go to them with a five thousand dollar expenditure. Um, and, and that is, is, believe it or not, in my experience. With five million dollars, it is, there's a great opportu, uh, great likelihood that they're going to ask. For, uh, pre-authorization to spend up to five thousand or, uh, five thousand dollars or more, so. Those kinds of things to see what that, what that looks like. Um, and, and then also what does, um. If it's, if it's, if the spending can be related to COVID activities, and I think. I think that's what, uh, Mr. Heinz mentioned earlier, if I did, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
What, what is that? Is that, is that, um? And again, I'm just trying to open doors here for, for opportunity. Is that, uh, staff overtime? Uh, one of the things I'm thinking of is the obvious. Um, you know, we've had a, uh, testing location for a long time in our city. Uh, and I'm sure we have spent, um, our citizens' money, um, providing that service here, uh, in our community for the county. Um, so is it that? Is it the vaccination clinic? And the staffing of the police department that was out there or Public Works or whoever else was involved in that? Uh, and, and does that include, uh, the, the other costs that come along with employees, not just the, the hourly rate or the salary, but is it? Is it what we've paid into pensions and, and the whole, you know, whole benefit package? So those are just some questions I have about how. Now, moving forward, what flexibility can we, uh, can we squeeze out of this? And, um, you know, I know a government agency that's in the, in the local region here that has, you know, a couple hundred million dollars to spend. And if you were to, with the, with the way that it's set up. Uh, they're not gonna be able to spend that in fifty years. And so, uh, the other question is, is how long does that sit? In, uh, in our bank or, or if it does, and, and how long are we authorized to use that money? And so those are just some questions I, it. You may have all the answers, and if you do, Ms. Tyson, I can follow up with you later. I don't want to take too much more time on it. I just want to make sure that. That we, uh, address those moving forward. Um, and then I will just make some broad statements in terms of what, uh, what, at least what my expectation would be. Let's get City Hall open to the public as soon as we can. Um, I, I shared many of the personal frustrations and I won't reiterate those. Um, cause I have in many meetings and I, and I think it's unfair to, to, to my colleagues to repeat them, but. Uh, it doesn't always make sense and, um. And, and I think that, um, one of the messages that at least I think we should be, uh, explaining to the public is. That, you know, it's kind of a rock and hard, hard place. Um, I, you know, we, we are, uh, we don't make the rules, uh, all of them. Uh, we do make some of them. Um, and those that we make, we can control, uh, what they are. Uh, but when the state and federal government make rules, we, we have to, or we should abide by them. Uh, and what the, the lasting, uh. Issues that may come from that is, uh, you know, um. Uh, funding and, and fines and, and all that other stuff. But there is a balance. I mean, I'm concerned that, that, that poor gentleman's gotta go get a money order. That's ridiculous. Um. I, I think that that's, you know, and so i- it's kind of a double-edged sword. Uh, and, and so, uh, as soon as we can safely do so, I, I. I think we need to, to open those other public, uh, public areas of our, of our city. I, I will say this, um, and I understand about not having the redundancies. I, I know of another organization that's in the region that. You know, has about six thousand employees, uh, and it's a pub, a public agency. Uh, their whole payroll and benefits department is closed to the public and has not been open for a year. Uh, tho- those folks don't work together. Uh, half of them are at home at one point, and the other half are, are at work. They haven't seen each other in over a year. Um, and that agency seems to think that if payroll and benefits went down, it affects everybody, and so they've made that choice. So that's one, another example. Um, of what that looks like. The other, the other piece is, is it relates to Elk Grove, and I'll just finish with this, is. Uh, Elk Grove is a big organization, but, um, you know, they have, uh, I know, uh, employees there that have been working from home. Intermittently, uh, for many, for many, many months, and so. Uh, I think they have the ability, and, and again, I could just be speaking out of turn, this is just my experience in the last year with, with people over there, but they have the ability to have half their staff gone. If somebody gets sick, uh, they're already semi-quarantined because they're working from home. Uh, the other staff could just stay, and so I know in two departments there, uh, they're public areas, that's how they work. Um, but it'd be interesting to hear from Jason, uh, over there, what, what, what they've done. And Jason Lindgren, the city clerk, also what, what they've done for their, that, that piece of it, because there's the public access of records piece. Uh, that I think, uh, and then I will just leave with one last thought is. Um, I, I, I just, uh, one of the questions I would ask the county. Uh, and, and maybe even the state, because I, I believe it came out of the governor's order, the emergency order. Um, how long an emergency goes for and is there going to be any? Other guidance related to the emergency order that was a year ago, put in place a year ago. Um, uh, because I, I have, from a elected official's perspective, not a personal perspective, but from my, my position. I have a little bit of an issue with, um. Uh, having, uh. Feeling comfortable with the authorization that we can continue in this capacity that's in, in direct conflict with the Brown Act, so. Uh, that would be my ask. Uh, and that's all I have. I appreciate it. Harry, did you have something for me? Was I violating your, my Brown Act?
No, no, I, I, I would note that many of the, um, provisions that have been put into public meetings over the last year. Are currently pending before the legislature to make them permanent in one way or another, not the, not the having the council meeting. Like always on Zoom, but having people be able to, um, call in and continue the opportunity to. For people to participate electronically and by video, should they desire. So, so those bills, we've been monitoring those bills, as I mentioned last time, and they're sort of creeping through the legislature. And my guess is they're gonna try, you know, or at least hopefully they would try to coordinate. Um, the end of the emergency rules with adding new rules so that people can transition as well as the council can transition.
Yeah, I appreciate that information and, 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 you know, um, just as you're looking at that and monitoring that legislation, I would. I, I think it's, it's, it would be, I would be in favor of having more public access, but not necessarily. Uh, less public access in relation to, uh, a building. So if we were to go back like we were. February of last year, and yet the public could still call in on a line or, or email, I'd be in favor of that, but we need, I, I. Again, I just think that the emergency isn't a year. It, it, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Papin, I have a comment?
Yeah, it won't be long. Um, I haven't heard any of my colleagues say anything I disagree with. The eternally moving goalposts. Um, from the governor's office down to OSHA and the county. Uh, continually claimed to be based in science. I don't know that they're truly based in that. They're definitely not, not based in common sense, so. Um, you know, I just measured today from City Hall to CVS, six hundred feet. And CVS, I can go in and, uh, with very minimal protection, you know, by a, a monster and a beef jerky. But I can't come take care of city business, uh, you know, important business with the city. Um, and I understand the reasons why, and I understand everybody's frustration with the lack of common sense, uh, that. We are forced to deal with, so. Uh, my initial question. Last meeting was, uh, regarding the possibility of conducting our meetings in person with remote public attendance, and it's clear that that is. Not gonna be feasible. Thank you to the, uh, to the staff for your diligent work in researching those possibilities. Appreciate the answer, even if it's not necessarily what we wanted. And I would ask one question. Um. Prior to the governor's emergency order, a city that, uh, instated in a, uh, state of emergency. Is required to review that every sixty days. Uh, the governor lifted that requirement or stayed the requirement, I guess would be the proper term. But, um, regardless of that, I think it would probably be good if we, uh, perhaps reinstated that on ourselves. And, uh, began, uh, you know, the, the regular sixty-day review of the state of emergency that we currently have in place. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Papinow. Does any of the other council members have any comments further? Well, if not, then I think, uh, while I do appreciate your comments back, Mr. Heinz, um, in regards to the. Getting things in place so we're ready to. To, uh, you know, proceed on the moment's notice if possible, when we get the green light. I would assume that that would apply to also City Hall. I would like to see the effects of City Hall and the, how that could happen, proceed. You know, with this conversation, so again, we can do that. Um. And so, uh, you know, I think we've kicked this subject to death, at least I have for pretty much, and I, you all sense my frustration and. Again, I, it's nothing personal against any of you. I, it's just open frustration against the situation and. I know that you guys are just, uh, you know, doing your job, so I just wanted to let you know, it's nothing personal. And, uh, but it's just, so, just a huge pet peeve of mine and I'm tired of having to answer to the people with, with. Less than sufficient answers and answers that don't make sense, so. Um, if we have no further comment on this, then, um, we can move on to the next item. Does anybody have anything further? No? Okay. Our next item, then we'll go to the finance department. The subject is going to be the city of Galt Long Range Financial Plan Update by Ms. Tyson. Ms. Tyson, you can go ahead when you're ready.
So. So while, uh, Ms. Tyson is, is, um, putting up the, the PowerPoint. Um, I just wanted to sort of introduct, introduce this item. Um, so, uh, Ms. Tyson and I have worked together on this one and. And what we essentially hope to accomplish here is to give council a. A, a sense of where we are financially prior to us entering the budget cycle. Um, which is, will occur during May and June, but, uh, because the question will inevitably come up, okay, we're looking at budget. Items, where are we overall financially? And so we want to give you the context. From which to judge these budgetary items that are coming before you here in the next month or so. Um, and to show you, uh, some, some, uh, trends that we think you should be aware of. And Claire, I'll step off, I'll step off the podium and let you do your thing.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and council members. First of all, can you see the PowerPoint? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So this evening before you, as, uh, as Mr. Heinz indicated. We're bringing forth the Long Range Financial Plan. This is actually an update to a plan that was brought before council, um, some months ago. Um. So just a little bit of background, the Long Range Financial Plan, it was introduced to council and the public in early two thousand nineteen. This was in response to the city council's strategic plan of fiscal sustainability. Um. If, it essentially forecasts the operational funds, so the general fund. And those funds that are reliant upon the general fund, which means Parks and Recreation Fund and the Lighting and Landscape Districts. Um, the forecast, um. Provided, uh, a picture. It was really a five-year forecast and what it provided was a picture of. Wha- what the city, the depleted of fund balances that were occurring in the city and when they would deplete. And that, um, uh. Turned out to be fiscal year twenty-four, the unrestricted fund balance would be gone based on that original, um, presentation. Um, and that's if nothing else had been done. Um, which of course, there has been a great deal done. So from that, we launched the Fiscal Sustainability Project, which began in the summer of two thousand nineteen. And that began with basically a communication process. What is the fiscal condition? Um, what are the, uh, relevant, uh, risk factors? Um, a lo- long discussion on limited resources, uh, weak sales tax base, the slow building growth. The slow building growth within an environment that was hungry for high demand of, of, of housing. And then of course, the Gaunt market, we heard earlier tonight, the Gaunt market and the diminishing revenues from there. From those discussions, we launched into how do we make corrective action? And that corrective action. Was determined into kind of three categories. If we look at the core services and we compare that to other like agencies. And because general fund is supposed to be providing for the core services of the city for the citizens. Then how do we make corrective actions, both short-term, midterm and long-term? And then of course, we recognize that the budget itself in that particular timeframe was not structurally balanced. And when I say structurally balanced, I mean that the expenditures do not exceed. The revenues for ongoing expenses and ongoing revenues. So council took actions to make corrections that and we'll go through some of that in a minute. But for tonight, what is before you is the long-range financial plan with the impact of all of those corrective actions that have occurred. And what that looks like going forward into the future. So this is actually a tool for. Us in the city and for you in the council to be able to see. What the impact of decisions are, not just today, but going forward into the future. So I wanted to talk a little bit about kind of the process itself. There were several public presentations and, and. Action taken by council. This started in February of 2019 with the introduction of the plan. We then went through further discussions in June, July and August of that year. That was the communication of the fiscal condition. Council took action on the short term in September of 2019. Now, the councils before this period of time that I'm discussing right here, they had already been doing budget cuts. They had been doing budget cuts since 2016, 17, and every year thereafter. But because that 2019, 20 budget was not structurally balanced. This, the city council took action in September to, to create that balance. And what they did was they. What was recommended is that we just. Cut temporarily cut services and costs. And so anytime you're cutting costs, especially when it has to do with personnel, you're actually cutting services. So. Went through an entire exercise with that and fully communicated that in public sessions and enacted that in September. Council also took a look at midterm corrections, which included looking at certain fees. It was deemed that there were parks and rec fees and building fees, permit fees that. Were not sufficient to cover costs and. Those fees are supposed to be covering costs. So there were corrective actions taken in November and December on fee increases. It wasn't the entire master fee schedule is just certain fees that were determined to be kind of at a whack a little bit. With what it costs to provide this service. So those corrective actions were taken at that point. There were additional public presentation, one of them in January, and that began the discussion on long-term. Correction. So the, the. The cuts that occur every year. Don't correct the issues we have with revenue. And so long-term revenue has to be looked at in some manner. We talked about it on the Gaunt market, you know, how do you restore the revenue stream? And there are other revenues coming into general fund that are clearly insufficient to cover. The core services that we're trying to provide to our citizens. So that was looked at. I will tell you that the, the revenue enhancements that were looked at included. The CFD, which has now been approved and is moving forward, that creates eventual property tax revenue. We looked at a parcel tax potential. We looked at TOT. Rates are TOT rate is fairly low at this city. We looked at sales tax increase. Our sales tax rate is pretty low compared to the Sacramento area. We also looked at modifying the use of the property within AB 3773, which is. Obviously an ongoing discussion that could increase property taxes too. And sales taxes. So all of those things were discussed. Some of those have, the council has taken action, obviously the CFTs. But other things, although they were discussed, they may not have moved forward. That's still a continuing discussion to be had. Additional council action on May and June of 2020. That was basically the budget for the two-year process. And that continued the temporary service cuts because at that point, the revenue. Had become sufficient to cover those temporary cuts. But it was at the same time that we were recognizing that COVID-19 had a great deal of uncertainty. And so those revenues were basically set aside in reserves to cover whatever the COVID-19 impacts were going to be. Before any consideration of restoration of services would occur. So this, tonight, we're going to update that financial plan and. This, this L R F P does look at core services, general fund, parks and rec, LLDs. We're going to forecast revenue and expenditures. And we'll talk about. How we're going to do that. This has been expanded to a 10-year view through 2031. And we have several assumptions. We'll go through the, the majority of them tonight, the ones that have the biggest impact. But first I wanted to start with the end in mind. So this is really just a graph of the revenue and expenditures for that 10-year period. The green line is the revenues and the red line expenditures. The goal is, and now this is just the ongoing revenue, ongoing expenditures. So the goal is not to have that red line exceed the green line. You, you always want to have enough revenue to cover your core services. And clearly by about 2028. This kind of flips upside down and, and we're no longer able to sustain that. And that's based on a series of assumptions that I'll go through. I did, I'm sorry, I did want to talk a little bit about the 2020 and 2021. That kind of bump up and down. So obviously 2020 is the COVID year and there were impacts there was also where we. We carried over quite a bit of expenditures into 21, and you'll see that when we get to numbers. So 21 or 20 looks like it's got lower expenditures, but some of those are just deferred into 21. So let me talk a little bit about the assumptions. The revenues we've projected are fairly conservative, but they're based on trends. This plan uses the actual expenditures from fiscal year 19 and 20. Those are audited numbers. Well, it builds into that, the 21 and 22 budgets, they're already approved. And then certain expectations which are validated through a variety of means. In this model, property taxes range from 5% to 6% increases. The 6% is what we're experiencing right now. We know that's not forever, but this also contemplates the impact of the CFDs in it. So that's, that's what that is representing. Sales tax increases are more modest, 2 to 5%. The 5% is really the input from the annexations. We had some business annexations that occurred a couple of years ago. And they're starting to produce sales tax. And so there's kind of a natural bump up in a level and then a 2% going forward. Housing growth is anywhere is, is generally 4%, although there is a correction in there in fiscal year 23. We are experiencing slower than anticipated growth in the housing developments. And so although the budget is in there for 21, 22, in 20, in the 23 year, we're making a correction. To lower that back down that base so that we can then have a 4% moving forward. Gaunt market reduction, that's generally a 4% reduction every year. If it does change depending on the year, but that's, that's about what it is. We did have a significant downturn that was not budgeted in 20 and 21. And so there is a correction in 23 for them. But then going forward, it's just straight 4%. Other revenues are between 0 and 3%. For slow growth. Assumptions on the expenditure side. Excuse me. Again, the trends are based on two years of actual, two years of budget. And sometimes going back for the, the two years of actual, but. Generally speaking, that's accurate. In the September correction for the structurally balancing of the budget. There were temporarily frozen position, positions. There were seven of them. One of them has already been restored. Due to the bringing back the landscaping services, that was one of the seven. So there's only six left. So in this model, those six frozen positions stay frozen. No personnel cola increases. There are steps in longevity. They're, they're about 3%. Calpers unfunded liability rates are input based on the Calpers. Report the latest actuarial report through fiscal year 27 and then assumed after that first rate percentage. Medical increases 5 to 7%. COVID-19 impacts. We set up that reserve for the COVID-19 impacts in fiscal year 21 and 22. We left that in this model for 22, but then in 23. We established reinstatement of some kind of service, services. And that's projected through this, that will take further action. Further evaluation internally and then further action by council. So this is a lot of numbers, but you know, I had to do it. So this is the first half of the. Numbers for the first half of that 10-year cycle. Shows the two years of budget and then projections from there. This schedule, there's, there's the basic revenues. Indicated here. There's some transfers. That's basically the cost allocation plan coming back in for costs restored. And then non-recurring is, is grants, basically grants. They come through the general fund. And then on the expenditure side, you see salaries and revenue, or salaries and benefits. And then operational costs, that service level reinstatement shows up in 23. That's a similar. Stream of money from the COVID budget. That you'll see later on. And then there's the subsidies to the LLDs. And that increase over time. And then the parks and rec contributions listed there. You'll notice that the contribution for 22, well, you'll notice that all of the expenditures in fiscal year 22 seem to have jumped up a bit. That's primarily due to encumbrances. It does not impact salaries and benefits, but. All of the other lines are pretty much impacted by that. That's a commitment. That's been made in 21, but has not been spent in 21. So it basically moves some dollars forward that have already been earmarked. For specific expenditures and that happens in all of the funds. So. Parks and Rec and the LLDs are only impacted by that. Pension unfunded liability is listed in here. So that's coming directly from those actuaries that I spoke of earlier. And then below that, which is kind of non-operating is the COVID contingency, which. We, we will be coming back to you hopefully in May. To talk a little bit more about how that gets distributed, how we can restore. Some of that funding may not be necessary for COVID impacts. Back to your point. Mr. Lozano, the, the city receives multiple funding sources for COVID. And all of them come with certain strings attached. So certain things will cover certain kinds of costs and others will cover different costs and. The trick on that is to make sure that you're in compliance with as much as you can. So as not to have to ever repay any of that. We just got a notification today from, from the Fed at FEMA, warning us about non-compliance and repaying. Some of these funds. So we think that we can defer some of these costs that are in this model. But we don't have all the information yet. The new funding, they have 60 days in which to give us all of the requirements. That's why Mr. Heinz is saying, we'll know more hopefully by May. And actually the state has the ability to spend a little bit more time on their requirements for it, but. Hopefully that'll be minor. So your net activity is listed on the bottom there.
Hey Claire.
Yes, sir.
Can we answer Councilman Lozano's question? I think.
You know, I had, I had my hand raised. I didn't want to interrupt, interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Appreciate it. I, I just have a real quick question. I know we're, we're running late here, so I want to be respectful with everyone's time, but I did have a question that's burning. I, I look at the pension and the unfunded liability and one of my colleagues had asked a question around unfunded liability that the answer was. Sent back to all of us. But my, my true question is this, in, in every year you would, well, I would imagine. That that liability would increase, but if you look between 23 and 24, it actually decreases and then. Goes back up and decreases again. Are we, so, so my question is this, why is that? And are we? Are we making assumption that, that Pers is not going to? To have any change in their discount rate? Cause I would imagine that they will.
That's a great question. This particular model follows the actuarial report, which sets a target for that discount rate. And. Yes, we, they absolutely have the ability. In fact, some of the certain actuary reports will provide. A quarter percent up and a quarter percent down on that rate. Just to kind of show you what that impact could be. So it is a possibility. These figures were taken directly from that. And actuarial reports are tend to be fairly conservative. So I don't think. I don't think the numbers are necessarily too low, but if Calpers changed the discount rate, you know. They will all be new numbers in here. I do want to address the fluctuation in the numbers. So. Calpers had a system that included what they call the classic members who. Had certain commitments from their agencies on through Calpers on what their retirement would look like. At some point in this system, it was determined that that was not a sustainable model. And so Calpers created another categorization called Pepper. And those people, although they still get a defined benefit. It is a little different and the costing is different. And so what that does is depending on your agency and those pepper members and how many are coming into the system and when. That's going to change. That's going to drop your numbers on this unfunded liability. Now, obviously it's not a, it's not a continued to drop all the time. Because there are multiple factors going into these, these rates on the actuarial side, but we start to see that flattening out. Fairly early on in, in these figures. Some agencies don't see it until later on, later 2020s.
I appreciate the, the response and I, again, I. I appreciate the the response and I again, I apologize for interrupting, I just didn't want to miss that one.
Anytime, council member, this is, this is a conversation and a presentation, so. You feel free and the other members as well, feel free to ask questions. Hey Claire, while while I have the the floor for a moment. From a strategic standpoint, I just wanted the members to understand. And sort of get it crystallized in your mind that property taxes and related prop and taxes related to property taxes. And sales tax pretty much drive half of the revenue budget here at the city of Gulf. And so when Economic Development Manager Mendez and. Community Development Director Hoffman. We all get together along with Ms. Tyson here to talk about business opportunities, housing opportunities. We are keeping these numbers in the back of our minds. Because we want to be able to show council as best as we can at that point in time. How these new ventures, these opportunities will help us drive those major revenues here at the city. And so from a strategic standpoint, we wanted you to know how we're approaching things. The other thing that I wanted to point out here is under expenditures where it says service level reinstates reinstatements. So I've been with you for about eight months. And so I will be working with each of the department directors to determine. If that level of reinstatement is necessary for the efficiency of the operation. And I realize that this was the plan as it was handed to handed to me from the prior city manager. But I'm letting you know that there will be a certain level of scrutiny. That Ms. Tyson and I will have about the reinstatement of that number. The numbers are in here in totality right now because that was the plan. And but I'm just giving you a heads up that these numbers under service level reinstatements. May change in the next iteration of this report. Based on our review and just working with the departments.
Mister Heinz, are you referring to the central service costs?
No, I'm referring to the service level reinstatement. Under expenditures, third line down, first number appears in FY twenty three.
Okay, so forgive me my ignorance, explain what those are.
Okay, Claire, you want to give them the, give them the history?
So the the six positions that were mentioned earlier that were frozen. They were frozen at a point in time based on, it was a point in time, it was not a strategic decision. But in order to reinstate and it and it came with service cuts. And so in order to reinstate services. Or any of those dollars, we we would go through. As Mister Heinz identified, we'd go through a process with the departments where they would validate, yeah, I still have a need for that. And here's the service that that provides for the community. And then it would go through the budget evaluation process and through Mister Heinz. Viewing of that and scrutiny, and then it would come to you for recommendations, so.
So so the basic evaluation of whether or not those positions are really needed overall and instead of just keep them carrying them as a dormant position. We would just eliminate them from the budget from that particular department or whatever.
But there, there are a number of options, we elimination is one option, perhaps changing. The level of the position either up or down for efficiency. Trying to figure out ultimately how we can get as many city services out of those six positions. As possible, or to put it more frankly, how do we get as many city services out of that six hundred ninety three thousand or seven hundred thousand dollars as we can? Sorry, Claire.
No, that's perfect. And you know, embedded in that is is primarily positions, but it could be other costs also.
Okay, good, proceed, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And here's the last five years of the model, so. This is basically an extension of those assumptions that we previously discussed and. As you can tell at the bottom line, when we get to fiscal year twenty eight, we've got a problem, so. If that remained at that point, that would be digging into the fund balance. And there isn't, you know, the the city as of the end of. Last fiscal year end had a ten point, I think it was ten point three million in general fund balance. But half of that was the restricted by council policy portion for economic uncertainty. And as your finance director, I'm always going to tell you, don't touch that, you never know what's going to happen. So we would want to do some kind of corrective action between now and then. To. To avoid that negative annual activity.
And I would, I would also like to say that it just. You see these negative figures at the bottom of this grid, we will always bring you a balanced budget. Now balancing that budget may create some pain. If we don't have adequate revenues. But we will always bring you a balanced budget.
I also want to point out on this slide, it's much more apparent than on the other one. The subsidy to LLDs. Continues to grow until it's six hundred and something thousand. The parks and rec and it continues to grow. And basically, the the dynamic there is that the revenues are either flattened or. They're they're not sufficient to cover the expenditures. And so this is not an indication of overspending by any means. This is still holding those six years worth of budget cuts steady going forward. But it's really a factor of lost revenue. So we put this slide together, this is that transfers you just looked at, but in kind of a different way, kind of focusing in on these. So parks and recreation, you can see how it goes from nine hundred sixty six thousand up to three point two million. And then lighting and landscape, two hundred thousand to six sixty eight. That's just a normal progression of what we're seeing as trends, what we'll be facing. So. This is the Parks and Rec Fund and. Unfortunately, the revenue is below the expenditure. That's not necessarily surprising in that general fund does support. A Parks and Recreation, more troubling is the change in those numbers. How how they're expanding out. And so the bottom blue line is really what if this general fund did not provide that contribution. That's what it would look like by fiscal year twenty six. The negative number would be almost ten million, so. General fund must continue to provide that contribution to keep parks and rec moving.
Right. I have a question, just maybe this is a question for Mister Heinz to either one of you, but. I saw the graph regarding the market. And I always see this graph line which shows the market revenue just decline, decline, decline. I mean, it 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 always seems like the narrative is that it's just going to keep declining at a certain percent all the way until it just goes. You know, in the red and then continues, but isn't it viable to think that the market just plateaus out at say, you know. It's bringing in five hundred thousand and it just kind of just, you know, stays stagnant kind of right there and doesn't really. Whatever, I mean, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't see. I, when I see a business decline, sometimes I I see a decline to a point, but I don't always just see it decline, decline, decline and just keep going down, down, down. I mean, I get that expenditures will go up and that would help them meet quicker, but. I don't know.
The objective of this is to show what would happen if nothing else happened. If if we continued the trend we're on. So as you just heard tonight with the the gold market plan. That is an attempt to change the course. And and that, that's why you look at these forecasts, because it does give you an indication, hey, I need to do something different.
Are we, are we not, are we not continually kind of? Like putting a further burden as time goes on, on the parks and rec, I mean, we're continuing building. I mean, I know we got the new CFDs passed, so obviously we've, we've, we've put a tourniquet on that, I think at this point, at least from going forward on this. Development standpoint, but I just feel like for a long period of time where, you know, we're adding more parks, we're adding more spaces. And all that's just being put on the plate of parks and recreation and pretty soon, it's like the straw that broke the back. I mean, isn't that what was continually happening all this time? I know you weren't here Lorenzo, but.
Actually, I think Director Solis is probably the best person to to comment on that.
I mean, you know, if he's there, he can comment, I don't know if he's listening. But I just feel like it seems like, you know, we always talking about the expenditures rising, it's like more and more stuff just put on the plate. You know, the scale just keeps tipping, it's like. You know, no wonders, the the money's not going as far as it was because we just keep putting more responsibility on to the parks or recreation. I feel like it was, I don't know, has there been a discussion, this is probably a discussion for another day, but. You know, we look at all this lighting and landscape, this is clearly lighting and landscape is still a huge burden on the on the budget and whatever. But I've been on council for two years now. And there still has not been a serious discussion or a serious brought, anything brought to the council. With the discussion about dissolving the lighting landscape districts and and going to, you know, trying to push hard for a city CFD or something. We've done the new ones and I I think that was great, we did that, but. Why has there not been a serious discussion? Because these things are continually bleeding money and we're not doing anything to address it.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, just frankly, I I just haven't had a moment to put that. Presentation together and work with Director Tyson and Director Solis on putting that together. I'm aware of it, we've had discussions internally. Director Tyson and Director Solis have brought me up to speed on some of the complications. Of doing a citywide CFD and eliminating the CFDs that are currently in play, there's some legal issues. We're also dealing with folks who currently don't pay for park services. And now you're asking them to pay for park services, so there's that dynamic. And so I'm right now trying to sort through all these things. Because when we bring it to you, I would imagine. The level of public comment that we're going to see is probably going to be pretty significant.
Well, I think that people aren't afraid to pay for something if they believe their money's going to go to good, I I I think generally, I, you know, people aren't big fans of taxes and and increased costs. But if they genuinely have the, you know, the trust that we're good, that money's going to make the city look better and it's going to be whatever and we can. You know, convince them of that. I know that recently in Lodi, when I say recently, a couple of years ago, I forget what measure it was, what measure, I don't know the letter, but. And it was, it was a similar bond measure for something like this. And it failed in Lodi, but it narrowly failed, like just barely. And 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 they said that when I talked to the department, they said the outreach was poor. They wouldn't push it like they should have, they didn't educate the public, they didn't do a good job at all and it barely failed. So I mean, it almost passed and I look at that and thinking, you know, if you did a good job educating the public. And convince them, this is what we got to do to correct these issues and we're not going to have to keep doing other things if we can put this on track. Then I think maybe we could be, we could sell it, I I don't know.
Well, the the beauty of this presentation that Director Tyson is doing right now. Is it's not only setting the context for you and the other council members, but it's also setting our financial context for the members of the public. And so if there is a question as to why are we seeing this proposal now? We can always hearken back to this particular presentation. Because it shows the current state of these, these funds, current state of the general fund contribution to. Solving this particular longstanding issue here in Gulf. But I'm aware of it and we'll, we'll probably be getting this issue to you. My guess is after we get done with budget, probably July or August, because I I want to make sure we can get through budget first. And then we'll figure out, because this is a longstanding problem, it's complex, it's going to take some time.
Right, it needs to be addressed and we got an election year coming up next year, so I, you know, if it's got to go on a ballot or something, you know, I just want to be, have some foresight on that. So anyways, I don't want to, you know, lengthen this long, the meeting's been long, so continue on.
I think Councilman Lozano has a question, Miss, Miss Tyson.
Yes.
Yeah, just, just to piggyback on the mayor's comments, I I think that. You know, without getting too far ahead of ourselves, I think that. Talking to our our neighbors and our colleagues to the north and south about how they approach this. And and you know, the the lighting landscape issue is has been a long issue in many agencies. And I think that how you approach it, like the mayor said, is very important. I, and I could be mistaken, but I think, I think Lodi in the two thousand and eighteen election. Passed a general, a general tax and so. So I think, you know, if if you have a specific tax or a general tax, there's different thresholds, but all that needs to be ferreted out. And like I said, up north of us, I know that agency does a pretty good job of. Of public outreach related to parks specifically to park issues and and so if we could tap into those. I mean, we have the former director, Parks and Recreation Director on our Parks and Recreation. I'm sorry, on our. Planning Commission from Lodi, and so I think we tap into him and 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 other folks and 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 but we do need to get on that. I I I think that's going to be important.
Agreed. So this is that's a similar slide for lighting and landscape districts. The number is not as big, obviously, it's a smaller group, but it's the same dynamic. And there's. There's no real correction that can be done in these three without making significant changes as you have 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 indicated. So I just want to mention what is not in this plan are future decisions by city council. Some of that is the revenue enhancements that we're still haven't finished. I think all of these ideas are good ideas, community input will be important. I think back in January, we talked about surveys out to the community and and that sort of thing, getting kind of a sense of it. What, back to your point, Mayor, what would you be willing to do to keep your parks and recreation program going, that kind of thing? So those decisions have not been made. And those are not in this plan, along with how those service reinstatements might pan out, those are not in here. Increased regulation and service expectations, we always have to put that in there because it it changes quickly. And frequently, the state doesn't provide additional resources for for the regulations we get. Infrastructure equipment replacement needs, this is always a concern for myself and Director Selling. We really are kind of kicking the can down the road on a lot of our deferred maintenance. There, there's not what I would consider sufficient funding on an ongoing basis. And then we talk about an upcoming recession, I don't even know what that's going to look like anymore with all the changes going on. But eventually there will be economic changes and those are not necessarily embedded in here. Next step, so we're going to go through the midterm budget process, we'll be bringing that back to you in June. That will have any adjustments necessary for the fiscal year budgets in twenty two. The Gulp Market, those considerations and actions obviously are going to continue to move forward. Along with the input from the community, the reinstatement of services will need to be reevaluated. And the long term revenue options that you both have discussed. Those considerations will need to be looked at with fresh eye and with input from the community. And then we will be returning with another update of this long range financial plan. After the midterm budget and then hopefully continuing on at least a couple of times a year is what I would prefer to bring to you. And that concludes my presentation for this evening, I'm open for any other discussion or questions.
I have a quick question. Just, just a general consensus of like. Or not consensus, but I don't know where to look for, it's getting late. That, you know, our, our, our reserves, you know, our emergency reserves. You know, I always ask myself, well, those are, you know, those are there in case of a really. You know, something really bad happens, we have that, but I mean, we just came through a global pandemic, I mean, what, what kind of? What kind of bad thing are we talking about? We would actually try to use that to try to correct something, I mean. If a pandemic doesn't qualify, then what are we really talking about?
Understood. Director Tyson, I'll, 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 I'll try to answer this one. Calamities such as what we saw in Texas. Flooding, we're, we're in flat land here and I I know we've got bodies of water. That are kind of close to us. So you know, things that are. That are kind of close to us. Um, so you know, things that are. I mean, that's just devastating. Um, if our, uh, water system. Uh, fails in some way and in a major way, we've got that issue. Um, there's a, there's a city down in, um, I think it was Alabama. I think Director Selling could probably give me more detail on this. But apparently, um, they had flooding issues and they weren't able to. Uh, restart their their water treatment plant because the infrastructure was sold. They were worried about water main breaks. Uh, Mike, do I, do I have that corrected? Are you familiar with that?
Not familiar with that particular one, but I do know that depending on the type of treatment system. Uh, a given agency may have, um, you know, yeah, you could be subject to. You know, flooding would basically, you know, rule out the effectiveness of your system delivering potable water. So you'd be under a boil notice or worse. Have to bring in water, so. For us, we're kinda on the high ground. It would take something pretty substantial as far as a flood goes, but. Yeah, I I mean, obviously, anything's possible, but it would be something majorly devastating like you described.
Yeah, and and Mayor Farmer, it it's, it's. I- 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 it would be, um, a once in a hu- hundred-year thing. Um, but just to not be prepared for that. You know, for us, it it's, it's just not, for us, it's not acceptable. And I think that having a ten million dollar fund balance. Um, is, I think that's great. We're gonna do what we can to add to that fund balance. And not dig into it. Um, but that that is there to make sure that these operations that provide the services to the citizens continue. Um, i- in spite of any calamitous situation that we've come across.
Yeah, no, I get, I get it. I get it. And and I I just, I think of like, you know, if I took money away for, you know, a rainy day or emergency type thing and. You know, whatever. You know, transmission goes out in the car or something and it's kind of way out of your budget, then you dip into that and you fix that, correct that because the car is a tool. To get you to work, to make money and so on. So if I'm using that as an analogy. Whereas here, you know, we tend to always have these things going on. We got the market suffering. You know, we, we're always trying to fix this and that and whatever. And I just feel like, you know, we have twenty percent sitting there. And is it ever considered where you take a couple percent to influx that money into something in order to? Then create revenue. I'm not talking about just pay a bill, because that isn't, that isn't, you know, I'm talking about not a one-time thing and, but I'm talking about to make a correction. To influx money into the market, to do some things that are gonna turn fortunes around or, you know, that's, I'm, I'm just kinda throwing that out there. And so I feel like, you know, if you never touch it. You know, and it's twenty percent and you never touch it, then what's the point of making it twenty-five or making it thirty if it never, if it's never gonna get used? I I don't know. I mean, ideally, that'd be great. You could put fifty percent away, but. I don't think that's ever gonna be a reality for us in the next ten years, just based on what I've seen in the last fifteen or twenty years in this town. So.
I think your analogy is very, very much on point, is that understanding that we're not making. Repairs to our buildings and our equipment. And if all we'd have to have is a couple, large ones fail, that ten million's gone.
Well, yeah, but also too, like, say there, say there's a roof on a building, there's some maintenance that needs to be done and that maintenance cost, you know, five hundred thousand dollars to repair. But by not doing that maintenance and just kicking that can down the road, when that repair now comes later, that repair, that repair could cost a million dollars. So we didn't benefit ourselves at all by stalling off on that. It actually ended up costing us more money. It's like not fixing something with your car. And then driving it and then the whole motor blows up. And then now it costs you even more money when you could have just dipped in, fixed that. So when I see all this different maintenance, I know we don't want to replenish all that money, but if these are situations that are gonna ultimately save us more money later on. That's all I propose. That's all I'm saying.
Understood. And, uh, it's quite possibly you may be seeing some facilities repaired. Issues coming before you in the next few months. I'm glad, uh, you brought that up.
All right, go ahead, proceed. Sorry.
Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, does any other council have any questions? I forgot you were done with your presentation, so. I can't see, I can't see the whole count. Oh, there we go. All right. So do the council have any questions on this? No? Okay. All right, well, I thank you for the presentation, Claire.
Councilman Lozano has a question.
All right, good, Rich.
Just one last comment. Appreciate the presentation and and, um. You know, it's nice to see the fruits of your labor, uh, of our labor, uh, as a city council. Uh, it's a couple of years ago, really buffling down and making some cuts and. And, uh, and I'm proud to be a part of that, uh, so that we can keep a healthy, healthy city moving forward. But I look forward to. Some of those other, um, larger conversations, certainly at the, uh, Park and Rec Commission, uh, level, I would imagine and. And, um, and and using some of our, our current, uh, resources, boards and commissions to really take a look at. Maybe lighting and landscape and how we address that and and some more of those long-term issues that we really need to tackle, uh, quickly. So. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Tyson and and Mr. Heinz for the presentation. And I'm sure I will, uh, uh, in my meetings with Mr. Heinz, I'll kick around some more ideas, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other counsel? No? Okay. All right, thank you, Claire. Thank you, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you very much. And I wanna thank, um, Michelle Neely, who helped quite a bit with this, the your budget manager.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, item I, communication. Do we have any communication time, Miss Huber?
Uh, no communication.
All right. Item J, City Clerk's report?
Nothing this evening.
All right, item K, comments by staff, Mr. Heinz.
All right, uh, nothing from me. I will go around the horn and see if the staff has any, uh, any comments. Uh, let's, let's, uh, go back to Director Tyson. Um, any, any comments for the good of the group?
Uh, no, but thank you very much for sitting through that and I appreciate your attention to it.
All right. How about, uh, Director Solis?
Yeah, I'll be in late tomorrow, Lorenzo. Um, no, I just wanna let the council know that, um, T-ball has started. We have opening day on twenty-fourth. We won't be doing traditional opening day ceremonies like we have in the past. We're gonna be doing low-key individual. Um, announcing teams. Letting them start and then going to the next game announcing team. So we're not gonna have a big ceremony, uh, as we have in the past. Um, something that happened today, I forgot to mention, uh, to Lorenzo is that they extended our testing site. The county has, uh, past April. Uh, we don't know exactly how long yet, but we are extended past April for testing. And, um. And, uh, please keep in mind, we are in growing season and. Our landscape, our streetscapes are only being done once a month, not, our parks are still being done. Twice a month, but, uh, our streetscapes are are only being done once a month and, uh. You can see it at this time of year. So please be patient. We're getting to them.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Uh, Public Works Director Selling?
Uh, no, nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
No, I don't have anything else for this evening.
Ready. Uh, Human Resources Director, Stephanie Van Stein.
Uh, yes, good evening again. Um, I just thought I'd mention that. We've opened up our recruitment for a code compliance officer in the Community Development Department. Um, we've, of course, got our police officer position still open. Um, we also have various temporary or part-time positions open right now. Uh, Recreation Worker in the Parks and Recreation Department. Um, and also we have a janitorial temporary position that's open right now and that's. To support the additional cleaning and disinfecting that we have, um, managed by our Public Works Department. So. If you know anyone that's interested or qualified, please have them visit our Human Resources webpage. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, City Attorney, Harriet Steiner?
Uh, nothing from me tonight.
Interim Police Chief, Brian Kalanowski.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Um, two items. First of all, the last couple of weeks, I think the only item I'll bring forward to the council we heard about last week. Is the incident wherein we had to, um, dispatch a dog that was aggressive. And, um, vicious and actually bit one of our residents on Amador. And there were some questions surrounding that. I talked to the newspaper about it. So my statement is that the officer acted appropriately. And as I would expect him to act in that situation to protect himself and the public. It's unfortunate we have to do it, but it's necessary in this case. And, uh, my review of his actions were appropriate. We, um, are doing some other work related to that. Um, however, um, I just wanted to put that out there because that's a statement that I had made to the newspaper. So you should, you expect something like that. In tomorrow's edition of the Galt Herald. Um, but I appreciate the efforts of all the staff that were involved in that incident and they did a fantastic job. Uh, the second thing is next Thursday, uh, the fifteenth at three o'clock. Out in front of the Police Department, properly social distance complying with. Every level of government's, uh, requirements that are placed upon us. We're gonna be doing a swearing-in of employees that we brought on during the last several months during COVID where we have not been able to recognize them. Uh, formally with a swearing-in and a badge pinning. So we have two officers and two dispatchers will be recognizing. And our city clerk will be doing the swearing-in. And we invite members of the public and of course. Our elected officials and city staff to, uh. Come by. We'll be out in front of the Police Department, like I said, and we'll have some water and some snacks after. Uh, with that, that's all I have.
What time is that at, Chief?
I'm sorry, three o'clock on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, Community Development Director Craig Hoffman, are you there? I know Craig's had some technical difficulties, so I don't know if he's still. With us. Um, all right, so we'll, we'll give Craig a pass tonight. Uh, City Clerk Tina Huber?
Nothing further.
Okay, and Rose Rodacker?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, I believe I've gotten everyone, Mr. Mayor. That concludes our comments.
All right, thank you. We'll now go on to comments by city council members and future gen items. Start with the Vice Mayor. She's gonna do.
Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you all the staff, uh, working hard, especially this lady for the meeting. And I also like to thank you for public comments. And this is very important for us to have a feedback, any agenda item. So I like to encourage the public. Look at the agenda and give us a feedback. And I also like to ask, uh, Mr. Heinz, uh. Regarding that current, uh, you know, the county fair and I talked to him, uh, I think. And I like to be, if you can be proactive on that and get back to us in the next. Week, because I was the part of last time when we was talking to that individual. And actually myself, I don't get, uh, really information where we end up at the last or what the city manager told her. And I just heard from her what she told. So if you can research, if you can still wait and get back to us, I really appreciate.
Very good. I will, sir.
Thank, thank. And a good night.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papinow.
Thank you once again to the staff for the very thorough reports and, uh, excellent preparation for the meeting. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Uh, I would also like to thank the staff for all the reports. Uh, we're just about to eleven o'clock. But I'll, I'll just one item, I would like to see on next meeting's agenda. A vote to open the market on the weekends as soon as possible, like within weeks after that.
I would, um, I would like to see staff put together. What a plan to transition to something like that would and how long it would take. Some ideas on how that would look like, what it would entail. And bring it back to maybe us on a future gen item that we could discuss and see logistics of it and so on.
I I agree. Many of us, you know, talked about being proactive, so let's do that.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I I don't know. That's something that might take a while. You know, I understand that that'd be something that would take maybe, but maybe we could. You know, have something brought back to us in a month or something. Uh, you know, and if that's not enough, I mean, you just, I would like to start having that conversation. I think we need to come back and make it. A a a specific topic on that and not just the, uh, the presentation we have tonight, but just talking about that specific piece of that and what. I don't know. Maybe we can, maybe it can, it can include some, some economic, uh, you know, maybe we can have some information from other markets. We can. Come and say this market operates this way and this way and here's what kind of capacity they get and this is how long they've been out. I would like to see some analytics from some other. Competition more or less. And 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 maybe even, maybe even some feedback from. Vendors, like maybe even, uh, if we can pull some vendors or something over the next month or something. And I don't know, it, whatever information I think would be helpful.
In the past, you know, I believe you mentioned before that, uh, in the past. An outside company or business ran the market, maybe they could do that on the weekends. You know, it's just another thing to consider.
No, no one's, uh, no outside agencies will run the market. It's been city staff.
He's referring, he's referring to, I think he's referring to, prior to nineteen seventy-one, there was a company that ran the market. And a private entity. The city took it over nineteen seventy-one. That's what he's referring to. This is not anything like in the remote history of, this is way, way back. So just clarifying, that's what he's referring to. This is a conversation that Jay and I had months ago. I was telling him about some historical history of the market. So that's where he's getting that from.
Right.
And can I get the clarification? When you say transferred to, does that mean end Tuesday and Wednesday or add to Tuesday and Wednesday?
I I would, I mean, I don't think you could just, I mean, I don't know, I'm not you, but I, I don't think you could just say we're gonna s- cut off and then go. I. I I would, I would envision something where we figure out how we can transition and maybe keep both in play. And then till one's viable. I I I think it would be. A real roll of the dice, just to cut off and whatever. I I would like you to propose something. I would like you to say. You know, come back and say, well, I've talked with staff and we've done all our homework and this is the only way we can see it viable for it to be possible would be if we. You know, bring on a weekend and then we start seeing, you know, getting some new vendors involved and then we try. I mean, I don't know. I I would like to see, you know, you guys are the expert. I would like to see what you got.
So, uh, but Councilman Vandenberg, would you be open to, uh, the mayor's suggestion, which provides us? Uh, some time to do some research to make sure that we've covered. All of the sort of angles to adding to the days that we currently have or replacing those days. It will take some time, um, uh, not, not a great deal of time, but I I like the mayor's timeline that perhaps. We can come back to you in May and perhaps have this discussion. Um, but not necessarily for a vote, but at least to inform the council as to, here's what we've found. And then at that time. If the council feels, okay, maybe a move needs to be made here, then we can always schedule another meeting for a vote. How how does that sit with you?
My intention is not to be hasty, but to be proactive, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, do we have, do we have any other? Do we have any other mention? I mean, any other comment on that from any other council member? Would other council be okay with? Some kind of, something coming back like that for discussion?
Oh, that's, that, that's fine. You know, we have to have some kind of proactive and what is the time that's can decide with the city manager and. As you longer, you can bring us back, then we can make a decision if, uh, Mr. Vandermark is agree.
Okay.
Great. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your remarks, uh, Mr. Vandenberg?
Yes, it does. Thank you for asking.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, just, uh, like I said, in the interest of time, I I would like to just, um. Uh, let everybody know, I I do plan on being here at the next meeting, uh, whether it's, well, it's gonna be on Zoom. Um, so, uh, my plans have been pushed back for a week, so. Councilmember Papinow will not have to pinch hit for me at the Sacon meeting. You know, I've already communicated that with him, so. I will be around and not leaving town until the twenty-first. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, sir. Uh, I just wanna say. Uh, you know, thanks to all the staff for what they did. I I appreciate, you know, the, uh, all the work that was done on the presentation tonight and, um. Trying to be optimistic that we can find some, some middle ground and stuff, um, going forward with public and stuff on this presentation. For the market and, um, and maybe come up with a viable, uh, thing that we can all, um, agree on. Um, uh, outside of that, uh, I wanted to, um. Tell Mr. Solis that I, I have noticed the weeds and the media and the stuff, but I know that it's that time of year and I'm, I'm trying to keep on top of my own at my own business in my own home. So, uh, I know you, it's gonna take a great deal around it for you guys to catch up out there, but. I'm confident you guys will, you guys will do it. So I'm not gonna give you a hard time. Uh, I wanna thank the chief for, um. I was pleasantly surprised. My day, like, was totally made when I saw the radar trailer and the police dummy car at at the edge of town on Lower Sacramento Road. I know that was one of the areas we talked about in the in the safety meeting, and I know that, you know, we talked a great deal about a lot of chatter in the community right now about speeding and, you know, all kinds of traffic issues. It's becoming, you know, it's becoming a big conversation again, which it has been for a long time, but it's really culminating. And of course, all that leads to, you know, can I get a speed bump or can I get a stop sign and all that stuff? And I, with that said, I actually would like to see if we at some point in the near future could bring back an agenda item where we could maybe have a discussion about with the police chief about some ideas that they might have for just a grander enforcement or maybe a, I don't want to call it a sting, but something where I I feel like, you know, I feel like we can find resolution to a lot of these people's complaints without looking at specific streets, like altering something from a public work standpoint, but maybe just a an overall enforcement measure or or, you know, I know, I think we're going to get another motor officer soon, what I heard. So I think that'll be a huge deal, but I'd just like to hear from the chief more about his ideas and things that, you know, he's been doing and and kind of have like an open discussion with the council about some ideas of how we can really put a dent in in the public's concern on this particular issue because it's become, I'm getting inundated with it quite a bit lately, and people are tagging me on Facebook and things about these issues. And so I I feel like we need to, you know, answer to them or at least have a discussion. But thank you, Chief, for what you guys have been doing for the traffic. I I saw it, was very happy, and I've heard, you know, Steel's out there and he's doing, you know, a good job, and I know you guys are doing the best you can. So I appreciate that.
You are welcome, and that's only because we have excellent staff. So I made the request and they made it happen.
Nice.
Mr. Mayor, procedural question. Do we have two other council members that have agreed with your bringing back the enforcement conversation?
You know, I'm I'm going to support that, but I was on the safety committee, and they also have the concern too. So just like informal, what we are doing. Because sometimes citizen, you know, we need, they need to understand what we're doing. We're doing an excellent job, but just bringing in a council, something we get, chief can explain to the public.
Okay. Need one more. One more member.
This was your question?
I I just a comment. I I don't, I'm not going to, I think I'm going to be the spoiler here a little bit. I'm not going to be that second member that agrees with that. I think that that should go to the Public Safety Committee, and the Public Safety Committee should make a recommendation to us via a an agenda item. I'm I'm all for that. That's why we have that committee.
Well, we
and I'd love to have, I I need to finish.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
And we are, and just a procedural question, we're nearing eleven o'clock. And in four point ten point one of our our handbook, it says we have to extend the meeting by vote of the council. So I want to finish this quickly. I I think that that's the appropriate place to put it and then have it and then have us hear a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee. They're quite capable, and and I know the members are very well, and I think that that could be a good, good place to have that conversation. Not that I don't want to have it at the council meeting, but I think in in the interest of streamlining and and allowing for the folks that we put into place to have those conversations would be good.
Well, just so you know, Councilman Lozano, I am the chair of that committee, and we did have that on our agenda this last meeting, and it was a very long, robust conversation. We had motor officer and other staff in in place. We talked about it at great length, but I just, it's got no point where, you know, we can't give direction to the Police Department to come up with. I want to have a larger idea conversation about ideas of what we can do, whether it's regarding, you know, the caps aren't working right now, but, you know, just talk about ideas. What can we do within, you know, direction to city city manager to work with the police chief to maybe come up with some some out of the box thinking about how we can try to resolve some of these traffic concerns within, you know, without. So we did talk about it. I I mean, if you want us to try to bring it back on the safety meeting, but we only meet like every other month, and then it's going to take. So I mean, people are talking about this now. We have like two hundred comments on one post with me tagged in it. So I feel like there's an urgent need for me to react and do something. So I I mean, if no one else, if there's no third person to jump in on this, then I guess we can do.
That's three, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we will be, we will be speaking to the Public Safety Committee to get their recommendations.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I will wrap it up. And in this meeting, everybody have a good evening, have a good weekend and be safe. Good night. Good night.